I'm gonna call this February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four meeting of order. Uh, John Williamson.
Yes.
I plead allegiance to the law of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Nine o'clock.
Uh-oh.
You have a. We have a look.
My life. Well, I've I've read it. It basically we had to sneak this one in because we want funding to um the flood victims in the valley and what we ended up concluding. I've met with Alan and Kevin. And we had thirty-three people. Alan left, but I think it was thirty-three people who had filed paperwork with our emergency management office that um had had unmet needs. Everybody else that filed any information pretty much their needs were still met.
This is what we talked about the other day.
Yes, yes. So um this he had already allocated forty thousand dollars. This is just about what notifying the public. So Kevin is gonna send a letter to each because he just had the addresses to each of these addresses to notify them that funding's available. They came up with some criteria among them because of Alan's expertise in uh building inspection of the sorts of things and the limits we might want to apply based on insurance deductibles and the cost of HVAC units, which are is really the big critical item that most people lost. So we wouldn't be able to pay for the entirety of the HVAC units, but probably, you know, some of it. And also um I told Kevin and Alan that once they get all the applications in and have an appreciation for the unmet needs, that they should prioritize those applications and um come in with some recommendations on the record and then they could approve those. And then if we felt like we needed any more funds to apply any more funds to it, then we would have the option to do that.
My motion to approve. Second, long favor. The.
Ruth just has something for us to sign on that one.
This one with the reimbursement and very much of the death used to go to the county that happened to say.
This is with regard to the hiring that happened. Swearing in that happened a couple of weeks ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Tell me, we're good.
Second, long favor.
All right.
All right, I guess we'll do it nine fifteen workshop. If the commission doesn't doesn't mind. This is a workshop. This is not, this is informational. We're not making it today. It's just a conversation. Conversation uh to see how everybody feels and they answer any questions about if does the commission decides to move uh or use the welcome center, really welcome center.
Can I give a little background on that? So anybody who attends our meetings regularly may recall that last year, I think it was last year, um the Boy Scouts were working on their restructuring of of their bankruptcy case. And the commission had a critical role in that because we had um previously many years ago um sponsored some bonds that that allowed them to take out better interest loans. And if the restructuring was restructuring some of those loans, so we had to prove that against. And um commission has recognized the um opportunity to negotiate some things where, you know, a lot of people in the county perceive that, you know, the Boy Scouts haven't reinvested in our we we had hoped and expect and expected. So um he and uh the director of the Boy Scouts worked out an agreement where we could rent that visitor center for a dollar a year and they would pay a substantial sum. It's over three thousand dollars on of utilities um to allow us to use that location. Now, we hadn't at that time, because, you know, it all hit us pretty quickly, had time to plan it out or, you know, think it through or see, you know, all the implications of it. So I mean, you know, on a space, it's a great location. It's a, you know, nice location. Uh but how much is it gonna cost to rent it? And how much is it? What's the impact on the region and and what do we need to do to make it happen? And is it gonna be, you know, feasible on the long term? So we've had informal meetings with with the CVBs, but have not had all the brains in the room at the same time to sort these things out. So that's that's why I organized this workshop for today. So so we could get input from those of you who are experts in this. And, you know, I asked um Rob Ridgeway, the director of the Boy Scouts, he's here um to come because they ran it for a long time. So they know, you know, what's involved in that. And um I asked the CVBs to come that are involved and uh City Fayetteville's here. And so and our um maintenance and park director, so they could, you know, contribute to the discussion and and see what we can come up with. So any decisions that we make will be down the road. Um but today is regional for all of us because Commissioner Luis has done a lot of work in and putting some figures together and the budget together that he thinks might work for it. But Commissioner Brenneman and I are still learning. So so, you know, educate us. And um I'd like I know a lot of people are emotional about it, but I'd like to ask that, you know, keep it cordial because, you know, we want to need we might be constructed and figure out, learn what we need to learn and make an informed decision. With that, um I'm gonna go down there and ask um if any of you, I know Becky and Lisa, you do you want to present kind of what your idea was? Well, I don't. I don't understand. I don't understand.
My my idea was to utilize the welcome center to promote all FED counties. And I know everybody says that it's already done. But if you look at that building, that that building is beautiful. It's the opportunity we have to showcase FED county in a in a building, a twelve million dollar building on Route nineteen that has the ability to to take Winnebago's campers, multiple people at one time. And I'm not down on any CVB. I'm not. I'm not doing that. But the opportunity to utilize this building to bring more people here for all to go to FED county, to me is a no-brainer. I mean, where where can you, where most of our business is recreational. Is that correct? A lot of it camping. Lot of it RVs. Lot of people go up nineteen north and south. They have RVs. Where can they pull in and get information? I'm not, like I said, I'm not saying nothing bad. Everybody say something. Everybody proud beats me over. Where can they pull in and get information about FED county or Southern West Virginia with a camp or Winnebago? I talked to somebody the other day that's but I'm not gonna say who it is. But if he had a question to me, he said, Tom, what if that's not the right location? What if there's another location on nineteen that we can develop and build it, rather a welcome center? I said to him, I said, where are you gonna get a location that is for a dollar a year? That has five to ten acres. You're gonna buy a piece of property for a dollar a year. You're gonna put up a twelve million dollar building that we got gobs of money to do. There's no place on nineteen that you can buy, we can afford and erect with with all this. It would probably cost twenty eighteen or twenty-four million dollars to get a building like that, a dollar a year. And thirty-three thirty-two or three hundred dollars in utilities will be paid. The Boy Scouts committed to that. There's not a, there's not a place between Nicholas County and Raleigh County that any of us can afford to build something like that. So he said to me, he laughed, and he said, you're absolutely right. You answered the only question I had. So I mean, it's an opportunity for us to work with them and utilize this building at minimal cost. Minimal cost. I believe we can be bring hundreds of people off that road into that facility and sell FED county. That's that's what my goal was, was to utilize that building to showcase a beautiful building for our communities. So that that was my idea and my thoughts.
Don't forget about NRG RDA.
Oh, and NRG DDA, yeah.
So how many RVs are? Hello?
G R D A. What did they say?
Yeah, well, I couldn't.
So we didn't.
So I said.
Yeah, but he's still talking.
Even I heard that. So somebody did say something.
But, you know, we talked about, we're gonna have our a a development office in it. The LRA is gonna be in it. Uh, so anybody wants to come through and purchase property, looking to be have a business in FED county, we're gonna have our development officer, not only Jenna and NRG D R D A, but the county's gonna have its development office there. So I mean, that that's that's the other thing we're gonna have. You know, buy property, then come in and they wanna purchase property, residential piece of property or business. So did it cover everything to talk to you about?
Yeah, we did. Jenna, would you mind covering your side of things, please?
Sure. So we have some uh funding committed to expand our uh in a portion of the building to expand an incubation space for the West Virginia Hive. So we have been looking at the back portion of the building. Um when we were working with funders to identify a location for the incubation facility, they identified Fayette County as the location um that they would prefer. So we looked around for a couple of different locations. Uh, we were preliminarily awarded funding, continued on funding a space. We came to the county commission and said we'd like to occupy a portion of the space so that we can receive the funding to support that cost. And the funder granted that and will be announcing that soon. So um our agent has always been having a satellite office there as well as our business incubation services with the West Virginia Hive in that location.
Um, you mentioned to me that, you know, if you guys stood up, the you mentioned also artists occupying.
Yeah, so we have a some of the caller familiar with um some of the clients that we have with the Hive. We do have a client that has an active um artisan shop in Fayette County already where she is uh pulling together all kinds of different artisans and locally made products and and sort of consigning them and having a a shop. And she has expressed interest in partnering with us as a Hive client already and serving the front the storefront of that building and having locally made products in there and consigning those out. So um we said that if there was no interest in anyone running that portion of the building, that the Hive was happy to bring in our client to step up because she's already doing that in Fayette County at another location. And she's shown interest in wanting to do that there as well. And again, with all of this, from our perspective, um we would be contributing to the utility costs that we utilize. We would be contributing to the overall um determined maintenance costs for the building and collectively working with other tenants in the building to be able to do.
I mean, I think this is a game changer for Fayette County. I mean, a lot of you probably don't, but I think it is. I mean, we're growing. I mean, that's just, you know.
Okay, um would you guys from the CVBs like to articulate your concerns about the site?
Um, I was saying.
Can you can you do it in the microphone? Lisa, can you do it?
Yeah, talk to the microphone so people can hear you.
So I think we have been in talks, uh preliminary talks for about a year uh before I I think there was some um reach out ahead of time. We weren't really sure which area we were talking about. Um, obviously, there is a lot of traffic on nineteen and we know that. Um, the building is beautiful. The concerns that we have had come up, which we've all discussed, is the intersection and the signage and obviously the cost. Um, I think the biggest concern for everybody was just a matter of not impacting the marketing dollars for the joint marketing doctors that we have. Um, but other than that, you know, I know that it was something that, you know, as far as like doing a visitor's desk, having something in there that we would send up an information out to the public. Similarly, what we do at Tamrac was something that I think we did have an interest in. It's just uh making it affordable to where it doesn't.
How much my question would be, and I don't mean to interrupt you. I probably have to go one by one for the questions.
That's right.
You said not interfering with the marketing budget. How much? How much would you need to not interfere with the marketing budget?
Well, as far as like welcome center staff, those could go into marketing. Um, those are considered marketing. So it's really what would we be looking at is the expense above that. I think, you know, I know that we would have to have um like insurance, like a liability policy. That probably would just be an addition to what we already have. Um, and then whatever you feel like the utilities would be, and I know we've talked about this, both of us, um the concern with us is the the cost of the janitorial staff and uh supplies. That would be, that's that's probably what puts it over the edge for for, in my opinion.
Okay, so you don't have a figure really of what would interfere with the marketing? That would come from whatever extra would cost to run it. Is that what you're saying?
Right. I think the marketing, so as far as the staffing of the desk, that would be, that would be, that could be in the marketing budget. As as far as the other stuff, that would move into your overhead.
One of the concerns, Lisa, that I've heard is um that I don't know, I just spaced.
Janitorial was what you're talking about.
Is oh, oh, is because is so if 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 your organization is involved, it's the percentage of assistance or focus on Fayette County like like there if if for any reason New River Gorge was unable to do it by itself and and had to merge or work with your organization, then the concern among our Fayette County businesses, from what I understand, is that they won't get the attention and the investment in, you know, their marketing dollars, you know, that they have been getting.
Right. Well, and and I I see that concern. I mean, we are a regional bureau. I feel like we cover Fayette County very well. We work with the New River Gorge CVB um in a lot of ways, but obviously having somebody local is good. Um, I do think if there was the point that if it came to the point that we merged, I would be very open to keeping a satellite office over here. We wouldn't take that away. I mean, we wanna be, you know, we're also obviously partners, funding partners with you guys with the New River Gorge CVB, but our primary goal is to promote tourism in the region, and that includes Fayette County and all the businesses within it.
And how much right now do you does New River pay to Southern West Virginia? Or do you guys? With Becky now?
For feeding us.
Yes. So in so in twenty twenty they're highlighting the bottom four minute, twenty twenty two.
Oh, I did you make that copy?
No, I did not. I just have this. I have five copies of those worksheets.
We can make a copy after.
Hold on, I may find the twenty. Why are they all say twenty twenty two? Oh, wait a minute. Okay, I see it.
Yeah.
So of the of this dollars here, this is what we got from the county. This is a combination of from you guys, since I'll do this and and Spence's office. This is the CFA.
So you get two hundred and eighteen thousand, is it?
That was in twenty twenty three and twenty twenty two with one sixty-five. From the county proper one, but not, but from the count, that's total. That includes all these cities as well, and that includes Fayette.
Okay, I see.
Completely.
Now, that's including the seven percent because it says fifty-six. Okay.
That is considering best ideas too. Thank you for that.
Now, so if you were to put marketing dollars into staff, how much would that take away from your would would you have to have additional staff and would that take away from your online marketing?
It would have to. It would take away from staff. And the one thing we would look at, that would on that would have to be a partnership with New River Gorge CVB, whether whatever that was like. Um, you know, we get thirty percent of this funding, you know, obviously they get seventy percent. Um, and but a several, you know, a large part of my funding comes from other counties. So um not only, you know, but I have to get my boards buying up. I think I've told both you this. I would have to get their buying in as well. Uh, we wouldn't move forward without without that. Um so, but yes, it would have to be a shared cost between us to make it work. But we would need additional staff. I have staff, but they're all, I need more. I need more already. So, yeah, we have to have additional staff.
So another question I have is to mitigate the concerns that our businesses have, if we were able to overcome that particular expense. And Michael, you might be able to weigh in on this, but can we not incorporate some agreement into an MOU or something like that, or, you know, to ensure that our businesses are getting the marketing dollars that?
Yeah, absolutely. Like I said, Becky and I work well together. Um, we already co-op together a lot. Um, so I would never pull that. Yeah.
So um PJ has been working with New River Gorge CVB budget, visit Southern West Virginia's budget, what it looks like as one and what it looks like together. And she's added in the home budget. So that's why we have a concern of operating the welcome center above just visitor center staff.
Can I see that?
Yeah, it's in. I haven't just hung copy of it. And I will just straight up tell you it's a good chance that my numbers are not totally accurate, but there's direction.
Now, when you when you.
Weber's gonna go make copies soon.
And PJ is part of the CVB and the Chamber Board.
When you did that, explain how you put that together.
Yeah, so I had a I had the twenty twenty-three budget for New River CVB. And the twenty twenty, we didn't have a twenty-four budget when we started this for um Southern West Virginia. So I put those in the same categories. They don't all map their dollars exactly the same, but we've talked about it and mapped everything where we thought we needed it to be. So there's a column of total spend. Uh, total revenues, total spend for both. Then we had a separate column that was if it became one organization where the cost savings might come, they're not going to be paying two contracts for a marketing firm, for example. However, a single contract would have to be inflated by a certain dollar amount. Uh, removing any duplication and dues or other expenses that if you weren't operating as two organizations, you wouldn't have all of those. And took that and tried to look at it as to how we would balance it. My tax dollar numbers are from twenty twenty-two because that's the only breakout I had per town in Fayetteville. So that might be, that's where it's probably plus or minus wrong. Or not comparing year to year is really the thing. And um try to look at it for how we would be able to spend the money.
So did you you also have the separate separated uh copies too for the same year that you used?
It's all been common.
Oh, it's in the columns. Okay, okay.
We'll see it here in just a second.
Okay, that's I like to see stuff like that.
And I think the concern is for the crowd, the the CVBs receive funding from counties and municipalities from the Hittahoff and some packs. So it is for four of them dollars. Um, they keep forty-two and a half percent and they give the CVB fifty-seven and a half percent. And then we give fifteen percent to partner with Lisa for bigger advertising opportunities and partnerships for all of our particularly particularly our lobbying partners, because we have to buy in to have a representation with Southern West Virginia. Um but the CVB Association has an accreditation process and you have to be an accredited CVB in the state of West Virginia to receive those dollars. So we have to follow a forty forty twenty rule. Um, at least forty percent of our dollars have to be spent on marketing. At most, forty percent can be spent on staffing and no more than twenty percent can be spent on overhead.
That way just so. So.
Could you raise the focus?
I wanna get these numbers from her. So at least forty percent on marketing.
No more than forty percent on staffing and no more than twenty percent on overhead.
Okay, thank you.
So I have an office in Oak Hill. Um, it belongs to the CVB, the Chamber. Lisa had an office on Harper Road in Beckley. She also had a kiosk visitor center desk in Tamrac. Um, so adding the expenses of operating this visitor center with um supplies and J and D for you outside of the visitor center staff um would cut into our overhead, which would cause our accreditation to um be in Germany.
Hey, Michael, is there any of that that can be adjusted to be spent somewhere else of the forty forty twenty, if you remember?
Those were the, well, the one that could be adjusted, you can spend more on marketing. Um, you can always spend more on market.
Always.
The 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 hard cap is on the uh forty percent or uh, yeah, the over the basically, yeah, the basic overhead and staff are hard numbers, can't go over. But if you you can move the pie down and, yeah, you could spend sixty on marketing and twenty and twenty on staffing and over.
And I think between the two CVBs, like Lisa spends at least sixty to seventy percent on marketing out of her budget, and we spend seventy or more percent of our budget on marketing. And that could include the visitor center staff if they are just marketing the area.
So both of you spend seventy percent on marketing?
Um, how about online marketing versus?
It's it's all woven together. It's it's all of our marketing. It's our, it's our visitor's guide. It's our website. It's our social. It's our print.
We could probably break that up though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we do break ours out. Yeah, I don't. I don't know if we brought that. We do break ours out. The majority of our money is spent.
Well, because that's, well, that's one of the concerns, right? So if if, you know, everybody's moving online. So yes, so if, you know, we don't wanna take away from online marketing. So we have to figure out how to overcome that step. So the other staff member, though, if you can include staff under marketing, um, the other staff, is that just an administrative staff?
So I I didn't include the staff in marketing just because I wanted them to get actual dollars going into things like online marketing, print marketing, other publications. So in my breakout, I'm not concerned about the forty forty twenty. I'm just concerned about dollars, dollars. Just so you know that, we need to put those lines.
So so is there any way you could separate in a financial statement, could you separate FED county funds that are spent for marketing compared to, well, that'd be a, that'd be a Lisa question.
Um I mean, we do. I think it would be really hard because we, like I said, everything goes into Southern West Virginia. We have um, the only thing that we have separated out by county is we do have a separate correctly, Raleigh County, because they give us the, they give us the entire mountain, that's how our ball to set up. So, you know, where we get fifteen percent, we get fifty on them. So with that fifty percent, there is a portion that says set aside um that has a line order for that.
Could you could you separate it in the future? Could you separate it to to what FED county fund, what FED county hotel motel that is sent to you is allocated for?
Honestly, the the portion that comes now, like the the thirty, well, the fifteen percent of the total is to buy into the overall marketing plan. It's not not, it's not like we're gonna spend every dollar on this. Um, like I said, you know, I could show you a whole um, you know, slew of ads that, you know, represent Fayette County and everything that we mail out includes Fayette County. And we do a lot of co-ops where we mail their stuff out as well. However, as far as like separating it out and saying, this is the dollars and I'm only doing ads for Fayette County with these dollars, I I have not. That is not something that we do.
So what you're saying is the two hundred and eighteen, I'm getting to the question, the real question I'm gonna ask you.
Yeah.
The real, you're taking in twenty twenty-three, you took two hundred and eighteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-three cents and used it in the Southern West Virginia visitor's guide, basically. Ads for the Southern West Virginia visitors.
Yeah, it was ads. Yeah, basically, yes. And we had some niche pieces and stuff, but yes, it goes into the overall marketing plan, just like
It's not FED county specifically.
It is not FED county specific. Some of our ads are, but and especially when we co-op, which we do a lot of.
And there's a lot of advertising that you'll see that um Lisa will approach us with a a co-op opportunity and she'll say, I'll pay fifty percent and you pay twenty-five percent or you pay twenty-five percent or you got Southern County, you've got Fayetteville, you've got, she does have Winter Plague, have all of those co-ops. But we all come together and we agree on a consistent message that represents the.
And that does the state pay a different amount based on the number of people?
It does. So we get the, we get that match because we're multi anyway, but obviously it's still safe. It's money to have partner.
They get the seventy-five, twenty-five.
Yeah, so we do do that. And then obviously if we spread that out, and I, and like I said, she said, I usually do try to take the lion's share just because um you know, it benefits all of us.
So out of the two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-three, seventy percent of that goes towards the other thirty goes towards other. Would that be fair to say?
I think it's hard to really, it's it's hard to say that. I think it's hard to really, it's, it's hard to say that. I mean, we do spend probably upwards of, I would say sixty percent on marketing. But then you have to do, you know, we do a lot of, like you said, at Tamrac and stuff as well. We do group tour shows and stuff like that. I would consider it all marketing.
It's hard to quantify.
It is really hard to quantify that portion that goes toward other because we do have so many other partners and you know, our, our budget is, so.
This is question.
Yes, we're talking about how much they spend just on fed county. Jenna, how much comes out of the New River Forge RDA that's just been focused?
At the regional EDA, we don't, it's not, we don't have to split that way, because it's shared across. So it's kind of like, it's kind of like the same thing. Yeah, the, the state statute sets it up that it follows one, so. So probably, it's, it's per capita.
So that would be the same kind of example. It's kind of challenging to break it apart if you're looking at a regional concept.
Yeah, and now.
Uh, thank you for that.
Yeah, and I wasn't sure, yeah.
If you all have already.
And I also did want to make, make clear when the funds that we have available for this particular project is not coming from any of the county contributions to off of it. So we have a separate budget, yeah, yeah. And so a separate funding like that, yeah. It's not to say we wouldn't have to do that after the three-year grant over, but the first three years we would not be utilizing that off.
I just wasn't sure if you all talked about your breakout thing.
Yeah, so Gina, that was one of my questions. So after the three-year grant period, then we would have to revisit how to make that sustain.
Yeah, and we have the funds to, um, satellite offices. It may not be at the capacity that we wouldn't initially go in. But our goal is to have a revenue source from the rental of a space to offset the cost in the future. So we, we would ultimately, should we, should we move into moving, and I'm embargoed from announcing the funders announcement, so it's difficult for me to explain. It's, it's a tough one for me, but the space that we will be putting in this space will be utilized for incubation of entrepreneurs and they will pay to incubate the space, which will offset the cost that goes back to the building. I hope that, I can't get into the greater of this yet, but that's.
But hypothetically, it could be self-sustained.
Which is with all of our extension projects, we don't use our operational, our, our contributions from the county to offset the building operational costs. It only offsets the salary cost, our salary for the person that will go in this building. Even three-year grant budget, after that, there will be self-sustaining where they could.
And so in that regard, just Fayette County, Fayette County Board CDB in twenty twenty-three off of that budget, we spent three hundred and eighty thousand directly on Fayette.
And this one right here?
No, um, yes, but that's PJ's, yes. If you see the column for just NRG CDB, that's how it says.
Does that count Southern West Virginia?
That, that counts our partnership, dollars that we spend to visit Southern West Virginia to partner with advertising. What's that?
Maybe two fifty-two. I can't do math without Excel, so.
Tom or Becky here has an, has another question. Does, does New River Forge CDB charge membership now?
No.
So you, you promote all fed county businesses whether a member, they're a member of Southern West Virginia or not?
Yes. Okay. She asked if the New River Forge CDB charged membership dues. We do not.
But in order to be in Southern West Virginia is God, or to be promoted, they have to be a member. And I'm a past president, may I say that if I'm a past president of Southern West Virginia, you have to be a member in order for visits Southern West Virginia to promote you. So that would be a difference in CDBs, whereas Becky is non-membership and Lisa is membership, so. Thank, I, I wasn't sure if you changed that because I retired.
What is that function? Um, so our members start at fifty-five dollars a year and they go up to two fifty?
Well, four hundred.
Four, well, four hundred for resorts. So, so between fifty-five dollars and four hundred, obviously very small nonprofits, fifty-five. The average is probably a hundred and ten, the average membership, and then the larger companies can pay up to four hundred. So it does, there is a range depending on the type of business. And we are membership-based because we are regional. It would be, you know, we don't want a fun book out there, so.
Well, it's basically business size or?
It is. Nonprofits are always fifty-five. Small businesses are fifty-five, but most like shops, retail, stuff like that, it's a hundred and ten. We do have a two fifty level, I should have brought the breakdown. And like I said, only the like maybe a New River Forge A's, people like that, but they fight or, you know, like Springs, something like that pays the four hundred.
What do they get from that?
So they get, obviously in our visitor's guide, they are on our website in multiple locations. We represent them at anything that we go to as far as, you know, travel shows, we go to the international show, group tours and.
They provide you content and you.
Yeah, well, yes, yes. So they give the content. They, some of them advertise in our guide as well. Without being a member, you can't advertise. They, we partner with them as well. We've partnered with many of those in co-ops as well. When, you know, we couldn't do that with non-partners. So we do for our shore distribution. We do lodging reports every week so that, you know, you try to fill the empty spots. And I mean, there's just a lot of things that, there's a lot of different things you get for your membership. It's definitely worth it.
What do New River, what do New Rivers businesses get? Same thing?
They get, they get promotion in the guide, website, all of the information that we provide to our newsletter. They have the ability to post events on our events calendar. It's not, I mean, we're not membership-based, so we just try to cover everybody and all the information that we cover. Everything that we know about, we share.
So you just list every business that has an interest in?
Yes. Yeah, so, um, Siobhan Wilson from the town of Anstad, when she receives hotel occupancy tax from Airbnb, she sends them our information so that they know they can be represented on the CDB's website. And so that's, you know, we can't cover everybody if we don't know about you. So we have a really good relationship with the county of Anstad and they communicate that CDB is out there to help promote you.
So you're listing vacation rentals?
Mm-hmm.
Are you listing vacation rentals or?
If they're partner, yeah. But, um, I don't know, but Jennifer said that thirty-three thousand dollars of their budget is membership. So the membership is not a large portion of their.
Now, our membership is obviously very inexpensive. It's just, it's just a, it's just a commitment. It's just a partnership. It would be hard for us to go to my county and pick up every tour and visit services.
No, I understand. You have to have some initiative from them to have representation.
I got a question from Becky here on this financial. You said, it says seventy-four percent of your marketing, of, of seventy-four percent of the funding is, is in marketing. That was it?
That's from twenty twenty-three, correct?
Yes. And that includes the money that you give Southern West Virginia CDB. So Lisa just said that's not a hundred percent marketing, though, probably. That's the reason I was asking all these questions.
So the difference is what, two seventy or two twenty? I mean, like directly for Fayette County, we are in the business of directly representing Fayette County. So when we partner with her,
Yeah.
our goal is to directly represent Fayette County in anything that we do.
No, I understand, but once that money goes to her, then she splits it from what she answered the question a second ago. She splits it and asked her if it was seventy, thirty or something. She said sixty, forty, so.
It is.
I'm at overall budget sixty, forty. I couldn't tell you what goes where, but you know, I would say over.
The, the whole two hundred and eighteen dollars probably isn't going straight for straightforward marketing.
Yeah.
That's Fayetteville, that's not, that's Fayetteville.
Like we said, right, yeah.
Okay, with a hundred, well, okay, that's.
I think.
Hundred twenty-one.
I mean, like hundred twenty, hundred forty every year.
Yeah, yeah.
One hundred and eighteen is not coming from.
That's, that's all of them.
Okay, one hundred and twenty-one then.
Yeah, that's not, yeah.
PJ, what conclusions did you draw after analyzing all of this data?
The biggest thing to me was the hit to the marketing spend, direct marketing, so not moving, not counting staff in whatever category, but the amount that you actually spend on online digital advertising and potentially sponsorships or other print ads that you might get.
What was that, that impact then?
From, like I said, from my directional numbers, it's over three hundred and fifty thousand dollar hit.
So.
But, but this needs a, like a really hard look at it.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying this is the gospel. I'm saying this is with the.
Right, projection.
That's the information I had.
Okay.
And I will say that the, the New River Forge CDB board and the Chamber Board have been aware of this discussion for almost a year maybe, but both boards have been in favor of a visitor center desk, staffing two to three people and sharing that cost with Visit Southern West Virginia. So the, the, the bigger hit that you're seeing to the marketing budget includes the projections that Tom gave with custodial and supplies and managing half of that building expenses.
How much is that?
I can't, I can't remember. I, I gave, I.
I can't.
I didn't bring it in here. I wanted to see what everybody else had to say and what y'all come up with, projection-wise.
I'm sorry, what was, I, I want to clarify, what is your cost is for the partnership? For the, no, we're still working out the lease arrangement based on, we have an engineer, we have an engineer working to determine what, how much the building will need to build out. And then we will be, we, we will negotiate a first worth of foot lease rate.
So is that what you will do as well, first worth of?
I don't think it's going to be a lease per se. I think it's just going to be a partnership.
It's just a partnership.
But you have.
M O U.
Um, but I wanted to add that Jenna, because her project is, you know, especially the incubator project is going to draw a lot more power and utilities that, that we've talked about and Lisa brought this up when I spoke with her, but separate meters, so that that's something that they've already been talking about with the engineer.
Yeah, we're, we're having our engineers try to do some projections to determine what it would be to potentially either, it's, it's going to be really difficult based on what we're putting in there to say, we'll contribute X number of dollars to the utilities because it could fluctuate based on usage. So we're trying to look at the potential and obviously go back to the summit and, or the Boy Scouts and say, could we possibly split meter, the building as part of it? So that, because the goal at the R D A, just to be clear, is to take a portion of the building, negotiate separate and, and maintain all that we. So we, we obviously know too that we want to be a contributing factor to the janitorial services in the building because we need that as well. And then we would pay for the staff of our sites in there. But because of us operating not a visitor center on our portion, we, we need to be able to split as much as we can. So, so that we can say, yes, this is how much we need to contribute to. So because we have utility money in our, in our great budget as well for this, so.
So, Lauren. So, you know, I don't want to like divert from where we are in the conversation, but I do, like this is a question kind of keeps popping up in my head that I've had for a while. What are the initial setup costs? Jenna's talking about an engineer for their space, but there sounds like there's going to need to be other renovation that needs to happen. I mean, I know that space, there's not a ton of office space available as is. And I wasn't sure like where are all these people going to stay? Where's the office space going to be? Is the conference space still going to be there and available to the public exactly? And where are the, where's the funds coming from for the renovation?
See, I think, I think Lisa and Becky talked about just having staff out there, not having offices for. I think it's.
That's one of Tom's first questions to me was how much office space do you need? Because we were talking about possibly renovations. But no, we don't need any office space.
They're going to maintain their current.
We are not willing to relocate. I know that's out there in the community that he's trying to relocate us. We're not, we're not relocating. We are okay with staffing visitor center desks. We are okay. The New River Forge CDB is willing to stack a visitor center desk in cooperation with Visit Southern West Virginia.
And that stuff is pretty much already there. You might just need like.
Yeah, I mean, they've got lots of.
And the, the portion that we're looking at, we, we have no desire to impact, so we, we do not intend to impact the conference room, any of that kitchen space or the office space. We will most likely add an additional bathroom coming off of the, or I'm sorry, add an additional office coming off of that current office on that other side with a separate entrance. And because we want to be able to utilize the conference space, I mean, we use it a lot for meetings already, but we don't want to impact that space.
And, and I'll say too that, that Rob was gracious enough to offer staff to help us configure all those screens and stuff and get the content up, teach us how to do that. So, so, you know, we don't have to try to reinvent the wheel and learn how to use all that equipment they have over there. So that was something that, that meant a lot to me because I walk in there and I'm like, look, you know, I have no idea how I'm going to do this. The other thing that I, I liked is that we can rename it. Now, I do think we all respect the Rubies who built it and, and keep their name involved, but we do not have to call it the Boy Scouts Center. We would like to represent the Boy Scouts in it because the Boy Scouts are part of our community. However, we can rename it and make it the Fayette County or, you know, name it the River, name it whatever we want to name. We don't want to, you know, confuse people with what Becky's building is, but, but something like that. I mean, so we have the ability to do that and, and identify it as our own. With regard to signs.
No, yeah, no, but it's, it's big. And, and you're correct. The roots have to run about the dug. The Rubies are, are the seniors, but the former currently officer, their trust and, and he's totally aware of what, you know, the agreement is and all that. So he's trying to buy. So it's, it's up to space, which I'm sure that's going to be, but I want to put that out there, like we would have to get a check mark.
And I also did say, by keeping that Ruby name is keeping, I think, I think that's a.
Well, I mean, they contribute, they built, they built it. And, and I think that's, that's respectful. I mean, they've done a lot for the county. So I think, I think that that needs to, you know, we need to honor that. But with regard to the signage and that sort of thing, I mean, we can engage Department of Highways or I always confuse, I don't know what highways does versus what transportation does, but get those folks that study the stoplights and stuff like that to take a look at that intersection and make sure that intersection is.
And we have, sorry, I want to go ahead and throw that out. We have a Safe Streets for All Planning Grant for Raleigh Fayette N P O in working with the Region Four Planning Development Council. And we've committed that that area is one that we will study to determine what intersection upgrade need to happen. And just for those that aren't familiar with how that works is with the federal, the D O T, you can only apply for the Safe Streets funding if you are a planning grant recipient first. And N R B R A and the N P O are the only planning grant recipient south of Charleston. So we're focusing on Raleigh Fayette counties to determine, we're also looking at the, the lengthy image intersection there and a couple of other places throughout the two counties. But this is one that we prioritize so that we can figure out what kind of signage, stoplight, anything like that needs to go there. So that will come out of the county's place.
And I know that's one of the hot topics whenever my board discusses it. So I don't know, I know there's people in the room, but there's also people in the room.
Yeah, you're going to give them a chance.
Let's see, like signage and intersection keep popping up there, so.
Well, we, we, we're going to do it all at once for the sake of order.
Yeah.
So, so Jenna, were you saying that signage, that, that, that funding would cover signage as well?
It'll cover the planning for signage and, so any of the, the planning and then what, what we would, what would make it eligible for the implementation that could pay for signage, stoplights, any of that, that comes out of the plan. We would be eligible to apply for the federal D O T funds for Safe Streets for All. And so we were awarded that last year and have been working with the State Department of Highways to begin the paying process with N P O.
Have you guys, Becky wants to study our, our traffic that's coming from that direction? Or do you have any idea what kind of flow is there? There's a way down a hill?
And out of the numbers that Sharon shares, which is Route Eighteen traffic from the Department of Highways and it averages down to be about thirteen, twenty thousand cars.
I think the numbers that you gave were a little older.
They were. Steve Runyon did the study and that's down at the D O T in Lutzburg. And I'll just clarify, Jenna, I don't think with any intersection application for stoplight, though I think it would be wonderful. Port ten nineteen have had close to twenty-two deaths at that intersection. And it's not enough for a stoplight, unfortunately, so.
Yeah, we'll.
I think the lower speed limit is probably the best they'll do, like they did at the six twelve John intersection after that fatality. It's just really tough, but I think the signage will help, especially the approach coming from Beckley. Because if you're in slow lanes, it's challenging to pull over if you're doing CC five.
Um, and then you're with the scouts. So just a question, if I may, whoever wants to answer. Uh, how, how long will this lease be if we're renaming and I, and I'm not offending, I, I just, I mean, when the scouts came, I think Fayette County citizens were the only ones that did not support the scouts coming. I've always had to be nice. Um, but how do you feel the citizens of Fayette County will feel about this? I mean, I, I don't know. I'm just trying to ask the question. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good use of space, a visitor center. I think it could be fair between Jenna and them. Um.
I would think they, I mean, I've. I, I, I'm going to guess. I don't know how they feel, but we're getting something out of them. I mean, I'm not going to say that that way, Rob, but I mean.
Yeah, I know, and I fully understand.
And we do have.
It's in all of them. Green Bay County, West Virginia never leave the state. So I get it. I'm, I'm a local guy. I'm saying that I'm.
Then you remember.
And, and I've followed a lot of non-local guys, so I understand that part of it. Um, I under, I understand that. I can't answer that.
But we, we, we have other, we have other things that I believe that we're working on.
To make it a nice.
Even.
Bring everybody together.
Yes, I mean, I, I, there's some things that we are working on. Uh.
Because I know Allison, that was important to you as well, when you first.
It's not, it's, I mean, we, we're, we, we are trying to form a partner and work together on helping Fayette County. I mean, that's what, from the very beginning, I think, I'm just positive that's what we talked about, what I presented. And I think the other two committee, how they feel, probably feel the same way, but trying to work something out to better Fayette County. So that's, that's my thoughts and that's why I've always presented and that's why I've always presented to Rob and, and him being uh from West Virginia, he's always related the same thing back to me, working together.
So how long will this be? How long will it sleep?
It's going to lease a set up renewable body or.
That's a safe code.
Right.
That's a government, we're government entity. We can only enter into.
Unless you form a building commission.
Right, and that's wouldn't fall within the building commission.
But it could, especially with.
We don't own the building.
No.
Um, and we, we will never own the building. Um, and so we're, we're, we've worked out a.
Hey, you can form a building.
Okay, yeah. Well, uh, but they, uh, we've worked out at least it's renewable uh year to year for, you know, the compliance with the law. Um, and, and we foresee this um going for as long as uh we can. And I think the Boy Scouts uh seeing the uh, the value of it. Um.
Why, will we be displaced during the January block?
Yes.
Will we be displaced during the January?
So, so, so what that means, that's what it is. Uh, so during our January is going to be a minute before it returns to anything that looks any different than what we just did in twenty-six, which is fifteen thousand people. We're, we're, you'll hear an announcement in the next few weeks, it'll be in twenty-six. And it'll be fifteen to twenty thousand people. Um, displaced, it'll be the day that we, the kids come because that's where we check them in. Our January director, who is in Texas, um, but I have a little bit of authority with. We, we're going to rent some tents and do some things differently there like we used to do before there was a building. Um, to not, like, so we wouldn't come in and displace your offices, we wouldn't displace your stuff, we wouldn't displace anything. It may be a day that we have to say, okay, we've got to just check kids in.
But they could still be there, Rob, as you're saying.
Yeah, we can make that work.
Yeah.
And, and quite frankly, part of the beauty of that for me on the local, if I, if I take my January, or my G M hat off of the summit, um, as a local person, there's a lot of those parents staying here. It's not the, it's not the camping and stuff when we grew up. People don't let their, my wife doesn't let my kids go there. It's different. And so if I have enough stuff there, it's even people at a desk that, that can explain to them why we have locally.
Yeah.
So I can see that as a benefit. I'm like.
I agree.
It doesn't matter. Like, it matters to me that, that you guys are there and I want people to be happy to be there. We basically did this as a gift, um, because I've, I've been here the whole time before we even do what we said we were going to do early. And uh, we had no, if, 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 we have no qualms about taking the building back if we need to, like, it doesn't hurt our feelings either. We just really thought when Tom approached myself that it was to be helped, yeah.
And I will add that Visit Southern West Virginia has always had a presence at every January. Uh, we've had a booth either. Um, we did, we mostly had booth at the summit. Uh, the, the International Year, we actually did set up a Ruby Center. Yeah, so we, we've done that anyway. Uh, so it would really not be that much different for us.
Well, and I continue to hope with, with Rob taking this position, which he's been in, what, just over a year, right? It hasn't been too long. Um.
It was like thin dog.
Rob, yeah. Well, being a West Virginia native and loyalist and, and they have a new, what's his position called? The guy that just started last year?
C E O, yeah.
A new C E O um that, that we're going to have more reception and be able to do more. Um, I keep hoping for that. You know, the commission has to certify every five years that the Boy Scouts aren't using their tax advantage to unfairly compete with our local businesses. And that's coming up in two years. Um, so we just did it right when I started. I remember you guys were at the meeting where I was very concerned about all that stuff and, and. Yeah, we roll out there. Yeah, everybody saw me, I guess. And, well, because the guy at the time was trying to act like, you know, that we were rolling in the taxes and we weren't. You know, I think the amount was embarrassing when I texted Ruth and, and got the information from her. So, you know, that's, that's just something we're going to have to continue to work on. The way the voters have, have structured this is, you know, we don't, and I'm, I'm, I'll be interested to see what the tax numbers look like at the state level because, because, because of the property taxes where we make our money or um bed tax. But otherwise, you know, say, all the sales tax, if anything going on, it's going to state. So, you know, I mean, I think money should be coming to the county for that stuff, but other than just the peripheral benefits, but um, I feel like that's something that, you know, we need to just continue discussions with the Boy Scouts, figure out how. I mean, I will say that everything we've approached Rob about, he's been open to it. And including this issue, I mean, this is an expense for them. This is a, you know, something that's, you know, they're going to pay, you know, up over three thousand a month in utilities and, and a dollar a year for a building, they might have been able to lease to somebody for a whole lot more. You know, so these are things that, that I think we are weaning a benefit. I don't feel like we're doing them a big favor by occupying their building. I think they probably could have marketed it to somebody and, and gotten a taker, even if Chelsea Ruby had, had the timing been right, you know, so um, did you have something to add?
Question, are we, I mean, are you all dead set on it being a visitor center economic development? Or are there any other ideas, any other opportunities for, but that has been brought up by some of my board members that um maybe a museum or had anybody else approached you to use any of that space? Is it, does it have to be a visitor center slash economic development?
Well, again, this is information gathering, but, but it, it makes natural sense because it's been a welcome center, visiting visitor center in the past. I mean, that's how it's designed. So um, no, there hasn't been any discussion or anybody approaching us. And, and with regard to how the people of Fayette County will feel, hopefully they'll speak up. You know, we held this meeting, we'll hold another one before we make decisions. So um hopefully, you know, people will speak up and email us or contact us and let us know where they are on it. But I want to, I want to give, we had some questions on, on Zoom and I don't want to give them, ignore them anymore here. Let's see, um, the traffic, what would be done to address the traffic, the safety of people using the exit? Okay, um, ask Terry if she's, okay, so a couple of people, Ashley Shinard and Terry Harland asked that question. Hopefully we answered that one. Somebody else, same question.
Well, well, I know that we can get a track, uh, Mayor of Anstey was telling me the other day.
Yeah, it just looked in the.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, about the microphone. We'll try to do better.
It's, it's.
Okay.
Down at the intersection of, yeah, it, I, it's way.
I've been there and asking.
Well, I was actually going to get one of Goose Alt nineteen also.
I think you got the effects of the screenshot of what Sharon had shared.
Yeah, well.
Work with, they'll do it.
Yeah.
Oh, we could, we can pull up what we did and we can design it. We can come up, I, I, I can't spell off to you what any of the, you know, stuff was at that time. It's not, there are too many numbers in my brain, but we can pull those off.
Okay.
Send them to you guys.
Okay. And you never had any signs along nineteen?
No, it was always different. It's for January.
Just for January.
Yeah, nothing during our, and, and we can pull our, we, we kept a visitor's count. We ran the building, so we can provide that.
Absolutely.
It's pretty good for you guys. We can provide that. I've got to find it, but we should provide.
Oh, yeah.
Rob, while you're looking for stuff, can you also see what the cost associated was with supplies for like the, the, you know, paper goods?
I'd love to be able to give you that. It's just, it's, it's going to be a, I hope it will be an educated guess, John, because I buy and walk for the whole place. Uh, well, I probably should track it a little better for a building. Clearly didn't at that time. We're better at it now than we were, but uh, we could give you a estimated cost and what in, in the time that it took to clean and that type of deal. Honestly, in full transparency, the, the, such a most difficult piece of that building is relentless. Because it, it drives utility costs in the summer, just being frank. In the winter, it's not as bad as you would think. And cleaning is a, is a, is a challenge.
I'm sure.
I brought my operations and facilities directors looking at questions I couldn't answer, but the odds guys clean them now.
He told me that, I asked, I asked him and he said they cleaned it once, maybe twice a year when he did.
Doesn't say that at all. Um, and, you know, we have a lift and that stuff to clean it. We, we, you know, we, I'm not going to, I'm just being completely transparent and honest. I'm not going to put in the grime and make all the extra stuff that we can help with. But I'm also not going to say if the windows are dirty and you're in the building and we have a lift available, we're not going to come over and clean your windows. But I also don't want to enter into an agreement that signs me up to a bunch more stuff. Because I, I do answer to a C E O in Texas who, who questions like, why would you get into a thirty-seven hundred dollar a month utility bill that you'll occupy, right? He understands it, but it's a question and, and it's a valid question. None of the same, but, but we're here to help with custodial stuff. We, you know, we can help as much as we can in the off season as well to help alleviate some of that cost. We can help with some of our buying power, some of our manpower. We can help back you with, with the desk, with some folks in summertime if you needed it. Um, you know, we have volunteer groups that likes to help with that type of stuff that are still some of our local that would be willing to come in, you know, be trained to, to manage a desk and that type of deal. I just really struggle with agreeing to a whole lot. If that makes sense.
That's understandable. We don't, we're not trying to pin you down on.
We're here to, like, we, we're here to help. And, but what we don't want, and, and I've shared this with Tom a couple of times, what we don't want is is a building occupied by unhappy inhabitants. So it's not, that's not fun for us, I'm sure, but.
Um, so on the custodial stuff, when you guys were open and operational, how many staff and, and what hours were you open in? How many custodial staff did you have to have on site?
Well, we ran it, um, typically eight, eight thirty to five when we're in that range, about eight or nine hour opening. Um, we, we started playing when shutting down certain times and opening at certain times. Um, we, we didn't know how to run it. I'm, we, we didn't know how to run a business center at, at that time. We had uh some registration staff over there as well. We had a, a lady that always sat in the front circular desk letting handle guests that came in, got a small store. Custodial wise, we just picked it up along with the rest of the buildings on site with our same staff. So typically, excuse me, two people an hour and a half, three times a week. Yeah, that was, that was kind of what we did with it. So, um, was it A plus level custodial service for that? Absolutely not. Um, but it was, I mean, it was what we could afford at the time. Uh, it, to, to clean that building outside of the windows, just to clean the building, the rest rooms are the biggest deal, as anybody that's been in that business knows. Um, because that building will become, uh, unless you manage it correctly, we found here, just some problems on the down. Well, we put sign up, but it actually it raw had like nine should success. It will become a drug stop. If you don't have no drugs on, it'll become a drug stop. Um, but it's a couple of hours for a couple of people to, to clean that building, hour and a half, couple of hours.
You didn't have to have somebody there full time? I, I, I kind of, that's what I think we, I worried, like, somebody throws up all over the place or something, you know, just imagine.
Well, we often had the benefit, again, being open, we had the benefit of, okay, run over, somebody threw up.
I'll see.
And ten minutes later, they came over and we shut the bathroom down. Um, so that's a different benefit because we keep um fourth full time and a couple seasonal year round in, in custodial services and janitorial services. Um, so that's how they, they jump over and do that.
So.
But just without that, like accidentally, luckily, actually cleaning the building, just ninety minutes to two hours. And, and then how, how often do you want to clean it, right? And how many, how much traffic can you get?
Yeah, with traffic. Your bathroom is going to be a problem if you get a lot of traffic.
Mm-hmm.
That's crazy.
Well, that's why I, I think somebody should be there full time. I think one, I think one person can handle it because, I mean, I mean, and most of the trucks, most of the visitor centers I've been to, they usually have one person there. I mean, I don't think I've ever seen two. I mean.
And that's where we could help out if there's catastrophic types of situations, because we specialize in that. Uh, and if you had somebody there, we could for sure. You know, we would make sure whoever's operating the building would have Rob's number, would have the operation, the operation D's number to call if something goes wrong. Like, we're not going to fang in your, the alarm goes off or, you know, somebody does come in and destroy the bathroom or whatever, so.
Yes, ma'am.
So what you're, windows on the inside, do you think of that on the inside?
Yeah, we have a physical lift of a million thousand, we have a big lift shop. And again, that stuff we can figure out, I think, a little bit because it, lives are expensive, lives are expensive around there, transferring. So we do figure, our lift line, a hundred percent usage all done.
Before we get off this subject, I, I want to ask you other upkeep expenses. Then it's snow removal, there's something, right? Mowing.
We've already, I've already discussed that.
I know you've discussed it. For the crowds.
Sorry.
Yeah, those are the two key things, mowing and snow removal. Snow removal's up, I mean, we, we've lived, it's weird. I don't know what's happened. We've, I mean, we've, we've, twice this year, three times. So it's not been a huge deal. It's asphalt there, which is causing compared to what we're used to on our side. Um, and lawn mowing.
And so um Tom had talked with our park director, maintenance director about the county's ability to do those things because we're equipped to do those things. And they were able, they thought they were going to be able to do that because
Yeah.
The park's busiest in the summer.
A couple, we could, we could potentially help with snow plowing relatively as you know, mowing. Um, you know, we can, if you didn't want to bring your equipment, we can talk on cost, like the guy that does our you know, nine hundred acres of mowing, whatever Rob mows, you know, what, what he would, it would be a cheaper cost to, to mow that than if you had to go hire somebody to mow it. You know, the whole county's stuff.
And further, we have the benefit of the day report center um participants. And, and we had a briefing from the day report center director the other day and they, they have fifty-six participants right now, which is huge for us. So that means, you know, of course, any given day, it might not be the same people, but when you tend to have people, they tend to put them on the same jobs if they can. We looked into this for the Humane Society and the Animal Shelter. So they tend to put the same people on the same jobs as long as they're part of the program so they can.
It's the same, that's the same thing. You do not manage the truck traffic. Um, anything that your brain can visualize will happen, that is happening. Um, it, it's, it becomes a really, really rough situation as far as trash. Um, there's, you know, the dumpsters there, there's a dumpster, plus you have to focus in the, we carry the trash through the dumpster because we want to keep the dumpster away from the building. Um, but it's just trash and the trucks, you know, any type of destruction you can imagine bodily fluids is happening there, so.
Well, criminal activity, there are a lot of things that were worrying me if we did that.
Yeah, so just keeping, keeping, keeping that, that value would be a big deal. And really, if I put a sign up before January, keep them out and it's been nine percent effective without any regrowing or anything.
That's good. I want to let Lauren ask her questions. She's raised her hand. You guys can't see her because your backs are to her, but.
I have my back.
Yeah.
Um, and just, I am someone who really likes to ask a lot of questions and then, you know, look at decision making from that point of view, so it's just fair with me. Um, but the utility thing, we're in the newspaper article. Um, I know Tom said in the beginning, three thousand dollars towards utility. What is the actual monthly utility cost estimate? Um, because, and, and then the questions about, I, you start up costs and then sustainability costs over time. So then the other question I have is if it's a year to year lease, does that one dollar change? So then the other question I have is, if it's a year to year lease, does that one dollar change? Uh, could it change at any moment? Um, and then, you know, it just seems like a lot of questions about long term sustainability and and what that would mean for everybody.
Well, it's a renewable lease, and that's standard, that's standard in this business, whatever it is, because governments can't and aren't supposed to enter into it more than a year, so you.
Right.
You enter into renewable leases with everybody's intent, now, could they decide they don't want to renew? Sure. Um, could they try to renegotiate the lease? Yes, um, but but that, you know. I don't expect that's gonna happen unless there's a major change in regime over there. Um, that's, you know, that's just something we would have to count on, I mean, we're not closing anything to open this, so we will still have our functionality. Um, independent of that facility, that facility is just gonna um, give us more visibility from the road and.
And then what are the numbers on the?
I think it's more than utility, but what we did with that was we, our accountant took the full months. Utilities and we averaged it out, and that that number came with the average, and the reason we did that, honestly, is. Very rocky process of building, I don't know if you're like, turn the heat to eighty or their condition to sixty, and that could, and that size of a building with that much open airspace. That's a, uh, could be a fifty hundred dollar loss location.
Yeah, he, I think it was thirty two hundred somewhere, between thirty two fifty and thirty three hundred, I can't remember exactly. How much it was, but it was in between that that number.
Tom's your thought is that the the people who occupy the space, and Jenna, Jenna already explained, like, her part, that they would have their own utilities. But so the other people with them, that would be shared costs with the with the other tenant?
And what I did, what I think what me and Mike was talking about before, I I, we talked about having a certain fund put together. That would go into, and that fund would pay for the utilities. I mean, I think it's what we talked about.
Well, we're not just gonna set, you know.
We must.
Yeah, so one of, one of the aspects is, um, because this is new, uh, we don't frankly know what the utility cost will be over. What what they're contributing, because we've not done this, we've still not operated their facility in the different manner, so. You know, there may not, we don't know, so what we're probably gonna look at going. In from MOU standpoint, is just ha- having like a set fee, like, everybody that has a lease in there, except for. NRG RDA, they're they're gonna be separate, because they're doing something separate that could be a larger utility issue. But for the the CBB issues, what we're looking at is maybe just a a calculated set fee of, I'm throwing numbers. It's like a hundred twenty five a month is gonna go to utilities, and that's what we set in a fund, and if there's a shortfall, then I think the commission would pick up. The shortfall on the utility, but hopefully, we average it out to where that covers everything, that that's what we were trying to to look at. Because it just gets complicated trying to figure out who lose what, uh, and. You know, we're hoping to just kind of average it out with just a set fee, so then, for your all's planning purposes, you would know, okay, this is the total amount of the lease. This is what it's going to be for a month, there's not gonna be a fluctuation of the cost, here's what it is, that's, I think.
Or the MOU.
Or, yeah, the MOU.
And Tom has like the development office in there, and you know, each of those would have their own MOU and their own budget that would then be filtered into the.
Yes, yes, and I mean, we're the, we're the, is it Lesley, Lesor, we're the ones who are leasing the building, county commission. Or we're, it's the leases with us for the dollar a year, so we are responsible ultimately. For anything that's not contained within that lease, like the thirty two hundred or whatever the exact number is for utilities, I know it's over three thousand. But but a month for utilities, once all of that's taken care of, then our obligation starts. And so that's where, you know, we are gonna have to, you know, try to get some numbers from the power company and the water company, maybe from when they were operational. Or maybe from Boy Scouts themselves, okay, from Rob, and and then figure out, you know, kind of what we're looking at, you know, Jenna's, um. Extraordinary, you know, needs there are gonna be metered separately, so.
And to that point too, we've already talked about with Rob, the potential for NRG RDA, or in this case, the West Virginia Hive, which they are five oh one two three. Not a government, entering in potentially a longer sublease, because we will be putting capital expenditures into the building. So we already had that arm rotation as well, so once we determine the exact footprint that we'll be taking up. Rob is aware that we will be coming back to say, we might need a five year lease, renewable each year, but looking at the same five years. Um, and again, the hive will be the least fee as the five oh one two three.
Yeah, so there'll be two leases on that whole.
Yeah, or or a sublease fee from.
And we haven't, you know, and we haven't, through the whole, I don't remember when it was, at least the sign, but it was somewhere in July or August. Around that time, we haven't even looked at utilities, I I told the commission that until the building was occupied. We weren't gonna get into the whole, you know, pay, you were a dollar over this month, bills a dollar, until each or whatever, we just, until you. You figure out how you're gonna occupy that space.
Another question, yeah, Rob, and what is your thought about moving off that big dirt where the structure valley is that possible?
It's awful, yeah, okay.
I've seen other parks do things like for like, if they they put up traffic diversion things, they're tempering, and that could easily alleviate. That whole thing of trucks turning in, because you're looking at a couple, every time I've gone, it's like, a couple of Roman warriors that stayed there that night or whatever. It's not a full lot, but those temporary trucks that you get the little spikes, that can easily vertical trucks and.
It does do that for me, yeah, and when Rob put that sign up for Jammer, we build that lot for Jammer, it's the biggest curse of that place. For us, right, I mean, it's great when you have a big advantage, because you have parking there, but then it's just very lost that every truck driver wants to stop at. And we had to have it for bus traffic.
We use the big pipes with the locks at the bottom to slide in and lock, and then pull them out, because it is needed for. The Jammer Bree, it is needed for other large vehicles, it sounds like it's a habit, it's, it could be greatly.
Yeah, if we, if we get down there, I can look at, and that's, that's stuff we can figure for this.
I've also heard stories from other places that have quite enough.
We're there, more questions, John, um.
Pardon me, but well, a lot of more transportation related, and I think we addressed most of them, one of the questions was, um. About the southbound, northbound concerns that that people have have, listen, we're, the county commission isn't, we're not traffic experts. I mean, I'm I'm not an expert on anything in particular, except for criminal law and found a piece of neglect law, that's about it, and national security, but, um. But not this stuff, so so we're gonna rely on, um, the Department of Transportation. To evaluate what we need there for safety purposes and and work with them to get it installed, I mean. I'm not gonna say, well, we need a blinking yellow light, or we need, you know, I don't know what we need to keep people safe, I mean, Sharon just told us. That, you know, no matter what they've done, they can't keep people safe at at that intersection at Court Nineteen, so. Um, we're gonna do our best with that, if we if we start to have accidents, of course, we're gonna hopefully get some results like they did at six twelve. But, you know, and and fortunately, it took one catastrophic accident, the member that we love was lost there. And, um, you know, they responded, I I hope it doesn't come to that, but, you know, we, we're just gonna have to. Trust the experts on it, um, Terry Harlem was asking about funding, um. Rob Ridgeway, the director of the Boy Scouts, Terry, had said that he's gonna get us some information about the costs, um, the. What we're talking about is, and I think we haven't actually said it, but it's been implied, some of the funding would come out of the CBB budget, some of the. Funding would come out of NRG RDA's budget, and some of the funding, um. You know, if there's any overage on on utilities and things, would come out of the county commission's general budget. But we don't have exact numbers at this point, but we we will have some to work with, um.
One more thing, just on the traffic, just to make sure it's clear, Jenna has talked about, they have a.
Yeah, we wouldn't be saying it, it would be like, I I know. It's Tom, all of those.
Right.
Yes.
I I totally agree, I have no idea what the answer is, is the stoplight, is the signage, is it, you know, front?
So we'll have a study done on the traffic pattern, uh, and the study will likely know what the intended use of the facility is. And those experts can then factor in, oh, there might be this increase in this and that and the other, and we'll have a study that then we can take to the appropriate. Highway authority to say, here's our study by the experts about what we need here, here's implement, the other aspect is, you know, nobody likes to hear this. But the the sheriff's department can patrol out there more, and that slows people down when you see a sheriff. Who's just sitting on the side of the road, so, I mean, there there's many ways to look at it, again, we we we, this is new. Just from our perspective, and so we just kind of have to identify these concerns, see what we think fixes it. And then be willing to adjust as time goes on, you know, the needs of the facility in the in the community.
And I just want to sort of comment on the question that, um, Mayor Hirdashank had about the Bay County citizens, I I don't know what their. You know, reception will be, but from the hive's perspective and NRG RDA's perspective, we've heard, you know, consistently two things. One is, we we've utilized that the Ruby Welcome Center over the last year for quarterly convenings at our working group. And we've sort of made that the base camp for inviting folks to come to, and it's it's worked out well, we have people of our Prince and Mercer County that come to that location to convene. We have, you know, all of the municipalities were represented at our last quarterly working group meeting, and so. That that really is the driver behind not wanting to disrupt the use of the space from our perspective, but the second thing for us is, we are hearing from the businesses. We serve in thirteen counties, um, through the West Virginia Hive, and we tried to put a similar incubation space like this in a private area. The private area effectively, and after a year and a half, there was no traffic, it was too sort of out of the way. So we have pulled the businesses that we work with as clients, and they have said, you know, the the Route Nineteen area is ideal for an incubator space for us. So that that's, I just wanted to provide that as a feedback, we.
Understand that, being the current chamber owner, understand that.
So, um, we we again made, made our decision based on the feedback from our businesses that said the Route Nineteen area is where they would appreciate.
And that's been the case since it was built and completed.
Yeah, so.
Yeah. Thank you.
Couple of questions. Um, my name's Heather Anselene, I'm a countrywide cabins, and I pay a good bit in occupancy tax every year. I also settle the river board CDB for, um, I have some concerns about this project, and I would like to understand. What you perceive the benefit to be to someone like me, who owns a business in Bay County that pays occupancy taxes. Um, I have concerns about taking funding from our marketing budget with the CDB, because I rely heavily on. For marketing my business, and I receive significant benefit from that. I also belong to the business of the West Virginia CDB, but I pay for that, and and that's over and above. When I'm contributing both with my occupancy tax and with my strong, the river board CDB, um. I guess I'm, you know, I I again, I rely heavily on the marketing budget for the CDB, and it concerns me if you take money from that to prevent this project. I don't see the benefit.
Do you think as long as the marketing dollars are there, you're okay with it?
Well, it's my understanding from what you just said, that you're looking at taking money away from the CDB to put toward this. And that would be concerning to me.
If it, but you're saying though, if the same marketing dollars are there, you don't have a problem with it.
Well, I think we actually need more marketing dollars, to be perfectly honest, but I would have less of a problem with it, but I I guess the benefit. And having a visitor's center that's on the south side of the county on the very edge, where people are going right into Raleigh County. And if they're going south, going into that visitor's center, they're not gonna turn around and come back up and stay in ICA. Um, I also think that our dollars are much better spent on digital advertising and reaching out to people who are not in our community yet. Than they are spending them on people who are already here, because by the time they're already here, they've already made their decision about where they're gonna stay and what they're gonna do.
So you don't think that would have a visitor's center at all would be better?
No, I don't necessarily think that, I just am concerned about how much money are we gonna siphon off? From our marketing efforts to do this project.
But if if no money were siphoned off, that's that's what we've discussed, and we're trying to get the numbers, and PJ just gave us some of the numbers, and that, you know, obviously, three hundred fifty thousand is alarming amount. But 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 if nothing was siphoned off of the marketing budget, it came out of overhead, if it came from the CBPs or staff. And or no additional staff, take it from the marketing budget, put additional staff out there, you know, then what is the?
I, you know, might feel differently about it, but right now, I don't feel real comfortable with it. I'll be honest with you, I just don't, I don't really see how I, as a citizen and a business owner in tourism ministry in Bay County, would benefit from this. I just don't.
So you don't think any number of those cars that are coming from that direction, if the signage is proper, to divert them when they're coming toward you? That getting any of those interested in your business?
I think it's gonna be minimal results, and I I come from a background, I mean, I don't countrywide cabins now, my background is community economic development. I've been here and done this before, and and I know that it's just not that productive.
Man, do you know how many people, I don't mean, I mean, I'm not harping, you know how many people stop in that that Blue River Visitor Center a day?
I mean, I've been given those numbers, so people do come in, but I just think that that particular location, where the Ruby Welcome Center is. I I don't, I don't see it as being comfortable enough to to generate enough to make it really worthwhile to all I've been into for that purpose. I think for the business incubator, I think it's great, and I, again, that that was my background as well, I've done tourism development, economic and community development. For a business incubator, it's a wonderful location, I think it's okay to maybe have a little theos there. For us as a as visitor, you know, welcoming outlet, but I don't think it's gonna be, we're investing a whole lot of money in.
So you're saying, well, so you're saying if if they have fifteen people stop a day, and this may have three hundred that stop a day. You don't think that will help?
I don't think there'll be three hundred that stop.
Okay, well, let's say a hundred and fifty.
I I don't think the numbers will be exactly different than what we see at the current one we have now. I'd be real surprised if they aren't, and and again, I've been doing, this is, this is not my first area.
Why have them at all? I mean, we have them along, I mean, and and I'm, I'm not educated and experienced, serious, so I'm I'm actually asking a question, I'm not arguing with you. Um, like, you know, along the interstate, like, we don't, I mean, the bathrooms are probably gonna bring people in, the food, if it's there, might bring people in.
Food, it might.
Well, that's what the incubator is about, is food, okay, so, um, so.
I'm just, I'm not.
I could see letting food trucks set up there for free if they want to go market their stuff.
That might help.
You know, they're just think, things like there, I think, I think the sky is the limit for, if we have space for it, we can do it, and I don't think. At least in my mind, I didn't anticipate more than one person welcoming people coming in the door and pointing them toward our materials. And letting them know where they can find what, you know, you know, I'm I'm, I don't, I don't plan to, you know, have somebody there to roll out the red carpet for every person who comes in. You know, just somebody who's there to greet them and who's inform, who can inform guests to of where to go. There are people who come into town who decide, I mean, the way I travel, and I've driven this entire country multiple times, because I lived out west, and I. From out east, you know, and and in doing that, I don't like to plan, there are a lot of people like me don't like to plan, and you you get. You know, tired when you're driving, and you think, oh, this is a beautiful place, I might want to check this out and stay here for a night, you know, and in that case. I would love to know about your business, because that's the kind of business I seek out when I, well, now, I'm one, one person, one place, but. But that's the way I roll, and I think people coming in that direction, that you're one of the people who stand a bit more from it, in my view.
If they're coming from south to north, but I don't think, I I'm not convinced that you can do enough in terms of signage. And and promotion to get people to cross that highway to go in there, I'm just not convinced, but you, but I mean, I'm. My jury's still out at this point, um, maybe I need more information, but right now, what I see makes me concerned. Particularly if you're looking at taking funding from the CDB to, you know, any kind of substantial numbers where. Now, because we need to focus what we're doing on marketing to get to bring them here.
I love how, I do have a little thing, like, so this is my opinion, I guess, um, so we run the visitor's center in. So what I think I find is, the immediate payment may not be there immediately when people stop. Um, a lot of them are on their way to a destination, um, but what we have found is when they, especially if they've never been through West Virginia, and they don't know what it is. Um, they stop and they're like, wow, we had no idea, and what they do is they gather materials to come back, so I really feel like it's. Yes, well, yes, I know, but I'm just saying, if you have a visitor's center like that, I do feel like people are gathering information, probably for the next time. Um, there may be some immediate, because people do stop and learn where to eat, um, things like that, there's that immediate gratification. But I really don't feel like we should look at this as a immediate gratification, in my opinion, I don't think we will see a lot of that, but.
I didn't speak that.
You guys, we have to take a timeout, we've got some missionaries in distress up here.
We'll be right back.
All right, I'll call a meeting back to order.
Thank you for the rest.
I'm not, I'm not going to whistle, not for whistle. I, I reframed myself from whistling. I just want to let you all know that.
Thank you.
I know the two commanders appreciate it.
When you have this, it moves your head on.
I jumped on last time I did that, but both of them, so I don't want to be jumped on.
Then make your hearing aids revert, right? Hearing aids.
All right, uh, I guess, yes, sir.
Um, my name's Brian Campbell. I'm another one of the personnel that has done the work. Before that, I, I was president of working within, in Mer. So I've been at this for thirty-five years. Um, we spend a lot of money, a lot of money to attract people uh to come to Bay County. Uh, we've spent a lot of money to build products and services that have helped attract. I'm, I am old school. I'm like you guys. I tend to like visitor centers. I tend to visit this. But I don't think the travelers of today, the millennials and younger, are as attracted to visitor centers uh as, as us all of us. And I, while I, I work a lot, I think the building is fantastic. It's a very interesting idea, but I don't think success is guaranteed. And I think there are challenges with the location, primarily because um when people stop at a visitor center, often travel important information is not the most important reason for the business. Bathroom number one, gas number two, food number three, and while they're there, they will wander in and pick up some information. They can agree probably for their next visit, not for their current visit, especially the folks traveling south. Um, and so again, I, I think it's a very interesting idea, and I think it's very, very worth exploring how that can become an asset for the county with multiple uses, and if it is successful, it should pay for itself. And so my concern is, is much more to do with, with lowering uh whatever the funding levels are for the, the direct advertising and website maintenance, and some sort of a dilution in the New River Gorge C D B and rolling it up into um, into the bigger C D B. Um, uh, PJ and I worked together for a long time. I ran marketing at A F twelve years. And um, the quality of the leads and referrals that we got from New River Gorge uh C D B were equal to uh the quality of our organic search results. So people that went to the New River Gorge C D B, came to our website, behaved exactly like um visitors who came to our website from a, from an organic search result. And uh the visitors we got from the Southern West Virginia were not as qualified. They behave much more like a, a, a much lower tier referral source. And, and um, some of my partners believe in regional uh C D B concept. And I think there's merit in that because you've got to have certain scale to have impact. Um, but when you service a nine county region and you have so many diverse uh voices that want to be represented, you dilute the message to the point where it loses the effectiveness of a brand. And uh twenty years ago, we started, uh the operator started it, we started a regional branding initiative that ultimately led sixteen years later to the New River National Park. But along the way, the goal was, was to create a regional brand that, that would, that would rival Gatlinburg, Myrtle Beach, Hilton Head, Outer Banks. We have so many amazing things to do and, and to visit here from Summersville Lake to the three national parks, lowercase n, lowercase p, it's a, it's, it's, it's an issue. Um, all these amazing things to do here, nothing really hooked the imagination of the traveling consumer the way Gatlinburg did, or Myrtle Beach, or even Nashville. And so we needed that hook. And we, we, we got four hundred thousand dollars in grants to conduct this study that led us to adopt New River Gorge as our regional brand. New River, the New River C D B renamed to New River Gorge, the four C renamed to the New River Economic Development Agency. Um, Southern West Virginia, I don't know what it was called before, they adopted the Southern West Virginia, it's a Southern West Virginia brand. And as soon, we, as soon as we adopted New River Gorge brand, the agency was charged with creating a logo. And I describe it as the crown. It's New River Gorge with a hump. And it's a hump because a lot of the other counties didn't want to be represented by the bridge. They didn't feel like the bridge represented their interests. And so there was already this little battle over just the logo. And, and again, my bigger fear is that if we lose highly focused uh C D B or ad campaign and website that focuses on New River Gorge, it is now making the national park the most powerful travel and origin brand in the country. National Park, capital land, capital beach. We worked for twenty years of, really fifty to go back through the seventies. All of that, the national river. We finally have all the tools we need to really um set us on a fifty year growth curve. And I would hate to roll that into a nine county region and lose that focus. And so I, I agree with a lot. I, I think the success of the visitor center as a visitor center is suspect. You always have, there's always trade offs in life. Whatever those resources that go into that visitor center take away from other resources. The people that go to work there take away from somewhere else. And so I love the idea. It's a great building. I think, I think it's worthy of some serious exploration. Um, but as long as we maintain the commitments to fund a separate and independent New River C D B and find other ways to fund the visitor center, do it under a trial basis, under a three year trial. Whenever we would create a new product or service, I always gave it three years. And in those three years, iterate, 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 until you figure out whether or not you have a formula that works long, reasonable and successful, or be willing to cut pay and drop it. Very interesting idea. Love the building. Love the partner with the, uh, the Boy Scouts. We have partnered with the Boy Scouts. Uh, we went and fought to get them here, but whatever long it was, we've been a big partner of those. And we, I love the idea. I just, I want to make sure we protect the funding, and I agree, can we find ways to grow that funding? If I was king, I would carve out the four counties that are represented by the New River Gorge Economic Development, the four counties that represent that the gorge, the park, and find a way that they can operate together as a highly focused New River Gorge two parts, center of marketing agency. We have the power of national park now. And I think that's going to bring so many more benefits than a diluted message trying to keep nine counties happy.
You know something, I can tell you're a businessman.
Thank you. I don't get how you all this much.
Let me, I haven't seen you for a while, and I was trying to figure out who you was when, when you first popped in here. Uh, so as I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I, I guess I'm going to have to, since you said that. So if, if the commission, if, if most of this funding was directed towards New River C D B and utilize, utilizing that location. How do you feel about that?
Again, if it's such a great idea, find a way to fund it, and prove that it's successful before you divert any existing funds.
And, and I agree with that. Usually two or three years you have to have anyway, and, and I, and I told these ladies before. What I want to do is prove them wrong and prove me right, that they'll remember the conversation. And I said, I'm going to put, I want to put counters up here, not at the interstate. I want to put counters inside of it so I can prove either me wrong or me right. It's not about them, it's about me.
The challenge is ultimately, number one, one measurement of success is visitation. But the true measurement of success is some sort of incremental growth in revenue and spending, which is far more difficult to track, it's virtually impossible to track. Uh, we will, we really won't be able to track. I think the people working the booths will have some idea, especially if there's some capability to direct bookings in the area. That would be a way that they could directly measure success. Um, but ultimately, it is, it's in marketing, you know, the digital world is easy to track. It's easy to can, track conversions and, and the other world, the old world, whether they're billboards or visitor centers or radio, TV, it's very difficult to, to ROI those types of investments. And so be cautious, but be, again, it's a great opportunity. I think the more things that we can do there, you give people reasons to visit. Um, I think that if we're successful, we kind of, I do have concerns about the traffic. You know, we have accidents. I was just talking to PJ, probably five or six really bad accidents. People leaving our facility on our nineteen. Uh, I don't know what that solution is. I know that there's a study going on. There's been very bad accidents down at the national park. Um, so we already have all of these, you know, even with traffic lights, you know, how many people wrecked the way that it was? And every seemed to be a really bad wreck. So, so we have some traffic issues, and I wish that was closer. I think if that was, that sold right into the Bay, I'll go kill, I think they'd be slammed up. But having it, railway disconnected, and yeah, I love the food truck. I love, I love ideas. It is more reason for people to visit that than simply get information. Information is not going to pull a whole lot of people off the highway because they're already going sixty-five miles an hour. They've got to stop, they've got to pull in, they've got to think about it.
You have the right sign, it would help.
Yeah.
It would help. And, and I'm glad you came today, and I'm glad you spoke up. I, I am.
I'll tell you, it's funny that you said three years. I'm not a business person. Um, I, I can't even get my own law building in. You know, I work for free a lot of the time, but, but one of the things I can say is that the number I had in mind to, to test this was three years. I mean, I, I just think that's a reasonable amount of time to get enough data to either support or not support keeping it open. I do think it's going to be difficult though, because we're not going to change anything. We're just adding something, you know? So, so it's, we're not going to be able to show, because we're not shutting down Becky's facility. So we're not going to be able to show that, you know, moving it did X amount of benefit to any of you. I, I like the idea of the direct bookings and some, and, and, you know, you guys are more experts on that sort of thing. But if there's something like that, and PJ, I know you have a lot of experience in that area, but, but, you know, if there's something like that we could do to help track metrics, you know, we would appreciate feedback, because that's something we really need to do, because we can't, I, I'll tell you, we don't like to invest in losing causes. You know, we had an opportunity to try to rehabilitate the Visi Center as Community Center in Montgomery, but it wasn't sustainable. We, we could have afforded to put the money in, there were grants out there, and we could have gotten it back to where it needs to be, but we couldn't sustain it. So we didn't invest in it. And that's kind of how we look at, look at everything. And we're hoping we're going to be able to sustain this, but if we can't, we absolutely have to cut our losses. We can't just keep throwing good money after bad like we have in other projects.
Right.
So.
You guys studied that and then decided that you couldn't. It was, they signed the lease and entered into the agreement and then hoped that all this other stuff, this workshop, ends up fruition.
What, we entered into the agreement for a dollar a year, and we're not paying anything on it right now, except for a dollar. And I'll reimburse the county if that's an issue. I mean, so we didn't have anything to lose by entering into that lease. And we had, thought we had some things to gain. So if that was moving quickly, the Boy Scout, they were in. They had deadline and, and their bankruptcy had a deadline, so we had to make a decision. I put it off two or three times, scared everybody to death. We were getting calls from Senator Manchin's office and everybody um, trying to see what's going on with this, because the whole bankruptcy would have fallen through. We didn't approve those bonds. And so, um, you know, we moved quickly on the offer um, so we could then follow up on it. If we didn't, might be running to somebody else right now. And, 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 you know, we, we didn't want to lose that opportunity, because it does a couple of things for the county. It gives the Boy Scouts the opportunity, shows a good faith in areas where they have been receiving a lot of criticism and, and well-earned over the years um, for not contributing to the county based on taxpayers' decision, decisions, at least the rest of the state decided that we didn't need taxes. So, um, you know, so in my view, you know, I want to give them an opportunity to rehabilitate themselves to the extent they can um, with things like this. But if it doesn't work out, it's going to, they own it, you know? And you've heard Rob say, it's not going to hurt his feelings if it reverts back. Um, and, you know, and then, yeah, we're, I mean, you know, we're, we're gambling a little bit. But hopefully, in, in an educated way, if, if we end up going through with it, I, I want to know more. And I've got a study with Ruth's help, PJ's spreadsheet, and maybe PJ's help um, to try to figure out, and we need to put our heads together about those marketing dollars, because, because I have, I agree with that. I don't want our businesses to, I don't want money come away from marketing, because we all agree, and before this came up. Um, you know, Tom was always badgering you guys, why aren't you doing more online? Why aren't you doing more online instead of, you know, the brick and mortar stuff? So then this comes up, it seems like it's contradictory, but.
I flipped, didn't I?
You flipped, and, and given the location and stuff, you know? You know, the size of the building, there's going to be some overhead, but N R G R D A is going to be a part. At the end of the three years, they may want to expand if the visitor center stuff does work out, you know, or.
One key component that I, again, am unfortunately embargored by the funder, but I am willing to share at this point that hasn't been mentioned, is that the incubation that we will be working on is directly related to existing food and beverage businesses. So this will now add up the food beverage component to the facility for folks to stop. And that's not us creating a new food and beverage spot. That's us working with at the existing businesses and restaurants throughout the four county footprint to utilize this facility to incubate in so that they can have a different opportunity to start outside of their brick and mortar. Additionally, working with the affiliate E A with, as part of our food truck incubator. Businesses in our region don't, that don't have access to a food truck or are interested in determining if they want to have a food truck. Will we, we will host the food truck there. They incubate their business in the food truck. Um, and then determine, do they want to eventually buy one? We help them find cap, access to capital. So that is one area that has not been talked about, you know, I, I hear, I hear you, we're not going to stop for things, right? Uh, that's not the wrong reason. So we felt it was pretty imperative that we, we figure out how to provide the food incubation not to create a new business to offer food, but to allow existing businesses to incubate for a period of time in that space to have access to that traffic that they wouldn't otherwise have. And have food and beverage availability there for folks that are stopping. So I know that that's not something that we have openly talked about at this point. Yeah, Lauren?
Oh, I was just going to ask, because it sounds like, I mean, you know, you're talking about what's being offered there, but it sounds like the facility itself would need to be marketed as well. I mean, signage is a piece of marketing for the facility, and so if you're having the incubators, like, you know. So I think that's one of the things we look at in the budget, is there actually maybe a marketing budget for the facility and what's offered there?
So we have marketing dollars in our budget for the incubator space. You say, you know, and to include, and I'm, I'm literally throwing it at the wall right now. I think the name I'm coming up with, I have not talked to this company in order to say anything, but let's say that we want to offer a secret sandwich. You get a week at the visitor center, you know, pay a minimal amount, see what, see what the, the incubator can offer, bring it through package. You know, make it there, um, because we will be investing in the equipment there. And, and, and determine, like, is it something that you want to, you want a regular basis? With that, they can market themselves in this incubator. The C D B, I'm assuming, would market that, hey, secret sandwiches, I vote the Welcome Center, or whatever we're going to name it, to be named later with the Ruby name on it. And then we would have the funds available to also market through our, you know, channels as well through the Hive. So again, that, that's our slice of, of what we're trying to focus on. But I do know that, that the foot traffic has been a lot of the conversation today. And I do think that by saying we will be adding the food and beverage components to this, is now going to have a different draw than just a visitor center. Uh, and so that, that's really what we are focusing on. And also, while we want to make sure that we are good stewards of our partners that are in the building, because we don't want to overstay our welcome. And so however we can split as much as possible with the utility and the access and the maintenance for all of that. We want to so that we can say N R G R D A is contributing to the sustainability of that food and beverage incubator there. So that, that's really the goal. But again, in, in the conversations today, that in, in looking at potential, or, or in looking at the funding announcement that will be coming out, that's a critical component that I felt needed to be shared with you all, that we will be bringing to the building to offer food and traffic opportunities. And, and offer a different type of exposure and consumer testing to existing food and beverage providers in the region. And what, and how much space is the incubator warrants to take? So we're currently in study. We, we are utilizing structure for that, with the structure filled that building. They know that building from inside out. We felt that it was um the best use of the engineering funds we have available, because they came with all the planning already. Nobody had to come in and throw it out. Um, so what we are conceptualizing right now, it, it is sort of the, you know, for those that are familiar, the staircase that comes in from that side entrance where the over um, the, the, the pool, yeah, the pool for saying whatever, you could call that the breezeway thing, whatever. Um, looking at car, carving a corner there so that we would have direct access through that back entrance. That if we, we wanted to keep it operational without the rest of the building outside of other business hours, we could. We would have a separate entrance there, but would still allow locking access to the bathrooms. And then really just seg- And then really just segmenting it off where that office slash kitchen is on that opposite side and the conference room. Recognizing that we are gonna have to look at, um, the close of access to water through that, through that side. And then obviously ventilation and keeping with the aesthetic of the building, we want those high windows, we want that flow through, we want folks to be able to see in. But we also want to, we really maintain, so, so when you think about the building, it's sort of that back corner square is what we're focused on without having to disrupt even that existing infrastructure that they're in the building. So that's what we have the planning for now to try to determine the first word foot amount. So that we, this per footage amount, so that we can then negotiate with the, um, commission on a first word rate.
But you don't have it so that it will be set up so that there will be a food. Every day that it's open.
That's the goal, but, but that heavily relies on the willingness of existing businesses to utilize it.
Well, I'll tell you too, I mean, what I envisioned anyway, hearing Samia's was inviting existing food trucks to park there and make money whenever they want also.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I can't say, but it, there's plenty of room, there's plenty of room, you know, if, if, if we can attract them, they might, they might make some good business there. And I'd love to see some of our food trucks that are seasonal, you know, be able to get out there other times of year and make money if that's their wish. You know, so, um, yes, ma'am.
But there is a kitchen in the zone you're not using, and that would be laying further when I'm getting a lot. We really, yeah, we don't want to interrupt, you know, the only potential disruption that the engineer are looking at is, you know, when you come off of the kitchen, there's like the dual offices, there's one on this side. Maybe that office might have to be impacted, but we're trying our best to not have the impact on office. Yeah, yeah. Um, and then, you know, also with the funding that we have committed, we will have a full-time staff person that will run only this program. So they will be deployed through the hive and they will run this program and we have a funding committed for them to run this for three years. So, um, again, this is all, um, more announcements to come and want to. I know, I'm like, I'm not, Judy, Judy Moore is listening right now, she's probably gonna go.
Well, she said she's gonna kill you, none of us kidding.
She's, she's probably ready to kill me, but that, I just felt like that is the crucial part that you all need to be aware of, that that food and beverage will be offered through this as well. And, and access to a different market for existing food and beverage businesses is what our goal. We do not want to create or manage any food facility. We, we want to offer the space, we want to have someone that's experienced. We are also talking with our university partners, our, our, you know, technical college partners and our culinary program about utilizing students to provide, um, a real life experience for WU Tech students to potentially utilize this facility and offer food as well. So it's, it's really that culinary incubator is what we're looking for in that space.
Right, and they just got Paul Smith that they're there.
Yeah, and we're meeting with Paul week after next about how he can help support.
Yes, Ten Ten Bridge has been involved in a lot of restaurants and was a James Beard nominee in his second year in the, so he's pretty acclaimed in the area.
So I'll say, um, also, we don't do it every day, but we do offer food truck in our parking lot. Um, the room we had two at a time, and you know, we have an easy exit in the one off ramp and bridge that gets to our office and uh, traffic works just fine there.
Except for seven and three.
And we're exactly, yes, but it's also very, very beneficial to the food trucks when school lets out. Um, so we do have that as well. It's not every day, but that does increase our traffic at our office to, I mean, it could be anywhere from thirty to eighty a day. And we don't have any problem with parking.
I had one statement, one question. Um, so first is what Brian said, you know, I do agree with that, you know, you've got the state level that's promoting the state. Um, we're able to put about, what, seven hundred thousand? So we had, we spent over half a million, between, uh, half and three quarters of a million dollars to bring the people from the state level down to the regional level. And then from the region, they can choose there whether they're going to, they're coming to Fayette County, whether they're going to Raleigh County, Somers County, or whatever. Or a combination of all three, six, nine, you know, whatever. Um, so I do feel like that has been a successful way to, a, a successful tier. Um, because I feel like we get the best of all three worlds, because we've got the state, you know, here, then you've got the region. And then you dial down to the boots on the ground where you live. Um, but then my question to Jenna was, what is your timeframe, do you think, as far as the bill?
Um, so we have, the first year of our proposal is available for the construction. We just found the award documents, the notice of award week before last, so the funder wants to announce. Really, they wanted to announce within the last thirty days, we didn't, it would be wise to announce until we sort of had this conversation and had the, the further conversation with the summit. So they really would like to announce, um, in late March, early June. Um, or late March two, early June, sometime in that timeframe. Um, I'll be honest, I think probably before an election they're gonna wanna announce, um, but you know, we'll, we'll work with them on that. Um, and then we would be able to immediately move into construction, which is while we're doing the building design now, but we're trying to get it done. To move forward, so we're in the literary design now, so we would hope to be under construction. That will be obviously working with the summit to approve that, what that looks like, um, and then purchase the equipment towards the winter, you know, December one would be ideal for us.
And I know what we're, what we'd be doing, this spending permission is different from what you would be doing. But do you think it would be feasible to have visitors walking in in a visitor center while there's construction? Or should we look at long-term way?
I mean, I think that we, we would, you know, ideally, I, I won't say, you know, yes or no. I think based on how we would section off the building, the most impacted area for the visitor would be that bathroom side, because that's gonna be closest to where our construction is. If we get, you know, break, hack the building and use the front half, then yeah, they could walk in through the front door and not leave that back door. But it's gonna be that side entrance that we're probably gonna need to determine if, if. I mean, that, that's the, I feel like, just in my head, the fact that it might be the most potential for impact for the construction, just being close to the construction.
There was a question that I just answered that, you know, whether it was gonna be food in the building and food trucks, and I said both.
Yeah.
Happily, if they, if they come.
Our goal is in, in the building, access to the incubator. We would love to work with the CDB, the county, whoever to bring food truck opportunities with, and, and know that you know, we have a partnership with the Food Failure EBA and their food truck incubator, that if we have a business that wants to test a food truck scenario, we can bring that over. Our main goal and in the, in brand proposal that we brought is very much access to a consumer testing space inside. But know that food trucks could be something that we could offer through that.
So I think looking at the numbers and stuff, with the CDBs participating with them, they cover multiple counties, they cover multiple counties. That we're gonna have to keep all partnerships in line. We're gonna have to keep all partnerships as a tax dollars between these two. For marketing and keeping our partnership in line.
I'm not sure what you mean.
So like if we take a look at the budget and you decide you're not going to affect the marketing dollars with your core CDB. But utilize some of the expenses to staff a visitor center desk. We were gonna, we are going to have a partnership, we're gonna have to partner with Lisa to share the expense and staffing that to cover Southern West Virginia, not just state. Right? Can we discuss that?
I'm, I'm just sitting here listening to you.
Well, I think if you have a visitor center and, you know, we find this at Tamrac, even though it's our kiosk, we, we have, we have all the stuff, we have everybody's. Um, primarily because you want to give a good impression if you come in and be like, well, if you're not staying here, we don't, we don't want to help you. We don't do that. Um, so they come in and they, they say, this is a beautiful area, and next time we're gonna come through, we're gonna stop it. Right now, we're going to Hart's Ferry, we're gonna give them both, we're gonna give them where they're going, but we're also gonna give them where they are. Um, so, uh, I feel like no matter whether it's Fayette County, Southern West Virginia, or a combination of both, you have to have a little bit of everything on hand because those, if you want to leave a good impression of the people traveling. You want to be helpful wherever you can. I mean, we don't, we don't answer the phone and say, um, things like, you know, it's not in our area, we can't help you. We figure out who can help them and move them on.
And, and the other thing that I want to note too is like, let's keep in mind, because our program, even though the hive is a program of the NRG RDA and we're the sponsoring entity of the hive, of the five oh one three three, they cover a thirteen county territory. So it's completely possible that we're opening up the incubator in Fayette County for someone outside of the New River Gorge region to utilize and determine, do they want access to expand into this area because they would now be serving a new market? So that's also something to keep in mind is, is, you know, obviously at NRG RDA, our affinity, our work and our high-level budget will always be in high before county footprint. But from the hive perspective, they cover thirteen counties. And so this now provides an opportunity for a different demographic exposure for those other businesses in that area. That would look at expansions into the region.
Um, so, a lot of you know me, but I didn't actually introduce myself, Lauren Weatherford, with WDU Extension, family, community, and development agent for Fayette-Nicholas counties. Um, in that, I'd like to actually offer something, is that should this move forward, you know, part of all the changes that have happened at the university and are continuing to happen are really a return to the land grant mission. And with that land grant mission at the university, it, there's a huge focus on engagement, student engagement throughout the state. So the Center for Engagement is part of the same division with WDU Extension. And I think that should this move forward, there would be opportunities, and the director works with us at Extension for the one for engagement. So I think there would be opportunities for things like student internships and other things between both tech and Morgantown. Uh, so I think that, please call me, should it move forward and, and I'll get you in touch with the right people at the university to look at student opportunities to support this and then also create those, you know, those lived experiences for those students.
And we have somebody on Zoom, I think, who missed part of what Jenna said, and maybe we don't have the microphone over there anymore. Um, but, um, we don't plan, the, the, she was pointing out that the kitchen over there is not of the food code for restaurants. Um, we, we know that, that kitchen is not the kitchen that they would be using. Um, Jenna has funding through a grant that, um.
It's a part of implementation of a, of a new commercial kitchen. Um, we, we have known that our impact that kitchen or use that kitchen, and we're also very aware of what is requiring or to operate at the most kitchen. This is the segment that we will now have operated.
Right, and these are economic development dollars, not tourism dollars. This is funded by a separate program, not Fayette County's contribution to economic development. Um, ask her if we answered her question, please. Or answered her concern. Thanks, everybody, for your input. I mean, I, I feel like this has been a really productive conversation and we still have some, some work to do and I wanna, I want some help with PJ's numbers when I try to get some help too. Okay, maybe we figured it out together, we'll get Ruth, who's a CPA in there.
Um, something that I often think is really, might be important for you all to know is that like all of this is really exciting. We think it's a great opportunity and the fact that, okay, you have multiple organizations if you come together, like like kind of emphasizing the fact on the not spending the marketing dollars, I don't think we fact that like these ladies have gotten recognized at a state level, like the governor's conference in tourism on how well that they've been marketing dollars. And it's not just, like, it's, this is kind of a unique partnership where we have these individual CVBs and then we have a regional, and you all are getting like more than double, you know, your impact of marketing dollars, because they're also carrying a lot of co-op ads and they're bringing in like hundreds of thousands of dollars. I mean, we just had that national geographic partnership that came through. And that's an ad that like, for me, I might have spent in the little CDB a thousand dollars, that's a hundred thousand dollar campaign. And just kind of like throwing the alarm from all of these little entities that like, I could see a satellite desk there being an amazing opportunity and it sounds like they're willing to find ways to make it work within the partnership. But it's just how they're not taking away from that big piece of the pie, because I'm going as a small CDB. I'm gonna go to town council next month and I'm asking for more marketing dollars, like an increase in our partnership. And here, you know, I'm looking at a possibility on the table of, I couldn't imagine if you cut one of these organizations right now. And especially when you're looking at something, like if you are considering this growth, like I'm kind of putting a side project in there. If we're gonna go big with this, like, almost like giving more to these organizations if it was a possibility to work. Like you're looking at marketing, all of this happening at once, just to kind of have that on your radar, if you're going into your budget meeting like Karen is. To have that consideration that this is on the table, instead of, you know, looking at chopping things. Maybe look at it in a new light of how do we go take with it and, you know, kind of provide more for both organizations to make it work.
I, I agree. I think we have to put our money where our mouth is and we have to invest in it upfront if we want to succeed at all. And, and, and in case anybody has any doubts, nobody's picking on Becky or Becky's doing a bad job, because we know she's doing a good job. This is just, it was an independent opportunity that we're exploring and we, the first people we talked to about it, or well, he talked to, and then they called me, was Becky and Lisa. So it, so it's, you know, we didn't come in and, and, you know, he had some ideas and ran them by and but, but it's not like we came in and said, let's figure out how to undermine what Becky's doing at New River Gorge or what Lisa's doing in Southern West Virginia. They present to us every year and we, so we know, you know, what they're doing. Now, we don't, you know, always hear about the impact, but you know, they'll tell you, when I see stuff that they've done, you know, I'll, I'll text them and congratulate them for it, thank them for it. So, um, you know, in case that perception is there, that's not it. Now, have we overwhelmed them a little bit? Yeah.
The first thing out of my mouth is both of, I'm gonna work with both of you. I said the expert, I wanna work with both of you, you know, I mean, I.
Yeah, I mean, you know, God forbid that we undertook it between us, I don't think we could do it. So, you know, it just. Um, I just wanted to make that clear, but I appreciate your speaking up and, and, and to your point, Brian, earlier. Um, I have spoken, I know Tom's spoken with some of them, but, but I have colleagues that I went through commissioner training with, um, from Raleigh and Nicholas, and, and even though they're represented by Lisa's CDB, um, I've talked to them in particular about what we could do to help. We try to partner a lot with Raleigh County and, and Nicholas County about, um, what's happening along nineteen. Um, we've had some preliminary conversations about whether Somersville could be a regional airport because it's safer to land than the other airports, the closer to airports that we have for your average pilot. You know, we've got pilots who are adept at landing in Fayetteville, but that's a scary runway, there are a lot of experienced pilots who haven't landed. Um, so, you know, those, those are just, you know, conversation, we, we've had a big cooperative broadband, um, discussion with, with several counties, just trying to figure out who's got broadband now and how it can be extended and how we can go together and ask for money so we'll get more attention, more likely to get it, you know, with a larger plan and um, so, so there are a lot of areas where we've done that and I expect that they will have, um, through Lisa and maybe their own, like Somersville CBB and, um, the state and the National Park will have some representation. Because obviously we can't have a, um, a site like that without being inclusive.
In fact, when we were doing that process, process, the, the multi-year process, my, my hope was always that somehow, I'm telling you, you know, how old I am, I still call proceed. Could be an entity that could go get state grants, multi-million dollar tourism grants. Um, then partner that money with state money and end up with a five to ten million dollar campaign that is sustainable and ongoing. And, um, now that we have the National Park, all that money is gonna be so much more effective in turning, um, interest into visitation. And, uh, now we need the infrastructure to follow.
And I think just to speak to that, we have been working and I think the commission will agree, we have been working on a regional basis with a lot of projects related to infrastructure development, because that's what we do with the development quarry. Development quarries are not on the, we market buildings, we, we build sites, we build infrastructure and we recruit jobs. At the end of the day, that's what we do. We win on these guys as we're marketing. And so we have been, and I, I have told this to Lisa, I know, and I'll say it to Becky here as well. We have been really careful on this project, set up and try to be the convener, because this is not our project. This is not, we have a piece of this project, just like they may, may have or, or want to have. So we're all, the commission knows, we're always happy to be a regional convener. We stay in our lane, how it relates to what funding we support, what cross-county projects we support. But we're more than happy to be a convener at any time, but we do not want it to be construed that anything like a visitor center or, or any marketing of tourism, that's not what you get soon. So always happy to convene and, you know, even told Lisa the reason that I, we had not pushed for this conversation is because this is, this is the county's project, we're, we're a part of it. But always, always happy to pull in and, and these guys know the, the work that we do as far as water, super fiber, uh, site development, anything, I mean, we're working across the whole region on youth projects. So I, I think I do, I do commend that thought process as it relates to this, because it, it's music barriers to look at our regional approach, because none of our county. leaves a barriers to look at our regional approach, because none of our counties are gonna be able to do this.
Well, and one of the things that Jenna does bring to the table that will help the tourism and help your business in particular is we have been asking her to, one thing is we're trying to get some other type of industry in here, and some business to get tax revenue to fund things, but the, the significant thing is housing. So, you know, we've got Wolf Creek Park, and NRG RDA has it, and they're gonna market it. Our intent for Wolf Creek Park is housing. Not another RV park, and affordable housing, not another, you know, Whispering Oaks, I mean, there probably gonna have to be some of those out there for developer to want to build homes out there, but, but, I mean, we're in a position to offer incentives, tax incentives to developers, and things like that, and that's what we're open to doing that. You know, depending on, you know, what our law usually tells us we can and can't do, and our county, our CPA tells us what we should and shouldn't do, but, but those are things that we're trying to do just to get, to address the housing market. Our land reuse agency that Tom referred to earlier, the LRA, is, it's, oh, and Jenna's the head of that board, so she could tell you more than I could exactly, but, but we are, we have a data housing issue here, especially, we prioritize the tourist routes, where people are, you know, coming up sixty and, and mossy, and some of those areas where we have clearing, I think we need to do mending. We have to work with Oak Hill, obviously, for that, but, but those are things that we've been targeting. We had a, was it two hundred fifty thousand or two hundred dollar, two hundred thousand dollar grant? So we've been knocking out houses, we're gonna apply again for a million dollar grant for that, and we're prepared to fund it further through the county budget, just to get a, a LEGA. But some of those homes, if they can be rehabilitated, and the owners are willing to sign them over, you know, we're, we're gonna try to get some programming in where we can rehabilitate those homes and, and turn them into portable housing for our citizens and your seasonal workers, and and that sort of thing. So, so they don't all have to stay in campgrounds when they come. You know, I know that's part of the fun for some of them, for maybe the first year or two, and then, and then after that, you know, probably loses its, its, do, do you wanna add anything, Jenna? I know you, you know.
Yeah, we sort of, I didn't know about the three quarries for the land reuse agency, is really to focus on, you know, one, streamlining the tax bill process, so that we, the LRA can pay quicker ownership of a lot of these abandoned life-aid structures. What we know is that the land reuse agency is the only agency in the state of West Virginia that has the ability to execute a first charter with people on a tax bill, which means that if any of these properties are, are eligible to be put on the tax bill, the land reuse agency can come in by sketching and say, you know, hey, we want that instead, don't put it up for bid. But then the problem becomes, you go through a three-year process, or four-year process to actually take ownership of it. So we're working with the state auditor office and others to try to, and the legislature to try to streamline that process for LRA. But then, at the same time, sort of comprehensively looking at that, identify two areas. One, what does, what does putting these properties back into productive reuses look like? Is it allowing, is, is it looking at these assets from a high level and determining these top spots that if we clean them up, they can become an area for a new recreation infrastructure asset, or a new housing development, or a single-family home of some sort? And really strategizing what the productive reuse of those, those look like. And then the last thing that we're kind of prioritizing is, what does long-term maintenance look like? The LRA serves in a strategic position to help support the long-term maintenance of existing assets, so they don't end up back in the life-aid setting. And NRG RDA comes to the table as attracting those developers that can help with this. How do we identify those areas so that we can reach out to a housing developer and say, hey, we have this really great area, we have, you know, we cleaned it up, we've done remediation on it, phase one, core drilling, all of that. You have the ability to access this, and we know that the Fayette County Commission will come to the table with a tax incentive in order to do so. They've done a similar scenario with the city of Charleston, this is not new or innovative, we're following the lead of others that have done it really well before us. And again, you know, sort of committing the commission for thinking in that regard, not just, you know, most land reuse agencies are just, let's take ownership and pare down, but we're looking at a lack of way of, what should we focus on first, and what does productive reuse look like? So that, that's really the goal for the land reuse agency, and, and again, looking at how the land reuse agency is available, asking the county for a small investment, in my opinion, to take ownership of some of these properties, would then, you know, we, we would resell those properties, and we would look at, we, we would look at continuing that revenue as part of the LRA. For like, to Wolf Creek Park, again, the vision is, is no different than what it was when, when Wolf Creek Park was created, which is this would, you know, let's lean on the natural topography and the natural assets that are in the park, and let's how we can build housing around that, so that we have a location. We're talking to the utility providers about potential upgrades in those areas, and, and really trying to determine how do we lean on that area to, to solve for some of the housing needs as well, so, yeah.
I'd love to offer suggestions. We're currently contemplating a venture down the verge. A significant investment in staff housing, seasonal, three, three, you know, three-season housing. I think something that would be super innovative is to go to Wolf Creek Park and create a community for seasonal guide-type tourable. That, that's below the level as of what I think most people think of as a portable housing. It is, it is greater, it is nicer than a campsite, but it's less than a four-season home. It's, it's, it's maybe a, right now, right now, I'm investigating, taking the design concept of the storage units, the metal prefab, metal storage units, having six units, twelve foot wide, fourteen foot deep, with a six-foot type of porch, making them out of metal, insulating them, window door in the front, window, air conditioning heater in the back, and being, being able to then roll twelve of those out on our, on our property. But if, this is no other wrapping or outdoor community I know has, has looked at it from this standpoint. They always shoot for year-round housing, that, and it costs four times or five times more. What we need are seasonal housing for people that come in in April and they leave in October. And something nicer than that, again, that middle range, and you could create a really cool community around that with some resources that will put us in, in, in the top echelon of attracting that seasonal employee that is a rock climb guy, mountain bike guy, river guy, food, food and beverage people. We have a lot of people that live an hour and a half away that wanna be able to come to work for five days, camp, and then they go back home to wherever, and so you can, you can do it at twenty-five percent of the cost, make a cool community, and it really sets us up for success to put reviews.
Yeah.
Without having the, the investment of multi-million, you know, you know, I'm talking fifteen thousand per unit, not a hundred thousand.
And Andy Davis on our team, we probably know, is very adamant about making sure that seasonal housing is included in the concept of Wolf Creek Park. I think the biggest challenge that we're gonna have to overcome, that we always know, is very, no infrastructure. Like, it is very significant investment that has to be made in order to put anything there. Again, I do commend this commission on taking the leap of paying off the, of, of, of working to, to own the property and covering the debt, because we were in a very unique position that should Wolf Creek Park have been taken back by the state of West Virginia, who was the leader on that, they would have given this to someone else that we did not want there. I can attribute you of that. And so, for the county commissions to step in and say, we wanna protect this asset, because we want it to be housing, and the right type of housing, including seasonal, now allows us an opportunity to plan as a community to say, this is what we want to go there. And having to build West Virginia designation with Wolf Creek Park is gonna allow a developer to come in and receive a pretty significant tax credit in order to build anywhere in a twenty-mile radius of Fayette County, or Fayetteville, I'm sorry, twenty-mile radius of Fayetteville, and, you know, a, a property value adjustment credit, as well as a, a pretty significant sales tax credit on any of the, on any of the raw materials used in the construction. So it's, it's common, I mean, we agree with everything you're saying. So I think what we have talked about over the last couple of weeks is looking at all of the plans that have existed for Wolf Creek Park, which are a lot, and determining what next steps look like, and potentially looking at a, the right developer to come in and help support that. And I think workforce, seasonal workforce housing is a huge contributor to that.
Well, interestingly, we asked the state for the same loan forgiveness that it was willing to give the developer it brought to the table, and it said no.
They said no.
In writing. I was excited to see it in writing, but anyway, they, they actually came out and said no. So we ended up paying about a million dollars more for the property than we would have had to pay had we had the same, you know, deal that a private developer would have had. So it, you know, at that point, it was clear to us that the state did not have Fayette County's best interest in mind. And, and, you know, I think we all, this was another thing where you have to move quickly, because they had already filed, the state already filed their paperwork to to fore, yeah, to foreclose the, the property, and as soon as that developer backed out, we had to move quickly, and we criticized grabbing emergency meeting, but, you know, in, in my mind, that one was, was worth having, because we had a very short amount of time to let the state know. We were prepared to, to pay, we'd already expressed our interest, asked for a reduction, or asked for the same deal, and, and after we were declined, we had to, we had to move on, so.
And I just wanted to add to that, because this was like a really pivotal moment in Wolf Creek Park history, in my opinion, which was we went to the state of West Virginia and met with the Department of Natural Development, all of the cabinets, the Housing Development Fund, Secretary of Tourism, at the time, Chief, Chief of that, and early, they were all around the giant table, and the commissioners pleaded and said, you know, we really want to figure out the best developer for this property. We're asking you all to work with us, offer the same, to be able to offer the same solution here to a different developer that would fit. We also, I was able to provide some data that showed that eighty percent of Fayette County was unsure. And the now Commerce Secretary for the state of West Virginia looked me in the face and said, you can't make me believe that Fayette County doesn't have food. And so, it was, it was, again, you know, a really crucial situation where it was like, they clearly have, they, they, they're very disconnected and have no clue.
No clue, yeah.
No clue to tell me that, you can't tell me that eighty percent of Fayette County weren't sure.
And, and also, we did have a viable developer that would have done what we wanted him to do, that, that I think was chased off. I mean, they came with their banker, they had everybody here when they presented to our URA, and, and I think that. Right, and, and we think that we, they could not, they were not given the same offer as the other developer, and also, we think all the consternation from the state level caused them to withdraw, so. We, we, you know, there were a lot of issues that we've been dealing with on this stuff, but, but we do have all of those things in mind with all of these things. You know, we're trying to do the right thing for this community, and, including not just here at the plateau, but everywhere in the community. But, you know, we, we need public input to know whether we're doing the right thing, because we're not experts on everything, we just do our best.
You know, we have been making a lot of changes, and it's, it's took a while, I mean, it's, it's.
We have had surpluses, you know, this couple of years of surplus now, where we've actually saved money and not, not been scrambling, we've been able to give raises, we've been able to do things that we should have been doing for a long, maintain our buildings. You know, with this money budget, we're pulling deputies off of the levy where they shouldn't be, because right now, twenty-three of them have to wait every five years, see if they still have a job. So, you know, we're trying to do those things, so we, maybe we can lower the levy rates at some point, because we're max taxing everybody for everything. But we're doing that by being measured about our spending and about our ideas, so we don't, definitely don't wanna invest in a, in a losing, you know, keep putting money against a losing concept. If, if it doesn't work, it doesn't work. You know, there's no pride of ownership related to it.
That it?
Okay, question to Jenna.
Question, George.